There's one that's going up and one that's going down.
One up, one up.
There's a couple of the older cows up there that are real docile. You're up there long enough, you have names for them. The real tragedy was...
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the first meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors for 2019. If you'll please rise, I have asked Supervisor Gould to lead us in the invocation, and I'm going to ask Supervisor Bishop to lead us in the pledge.
Join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you for this day, and we thank you and praise you for this great nation and county and state that you've given us, Lord. Please give us the wisdom and the guidance to lead it properly. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a broad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on January 22 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-43103.
Don't move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting. Before we vote on that, this is something I put in for sake of explanation. The chairman has the discretion of making minor changes to the format of the meeting. I have seen this waiving of the reading done at other government boards, and I think it works well. All items submitted by supervisors, I will read in full. The other ones, I will edit to shorter versions if I deem it can be done. I'm hoping this makes our meetings a bit shorter and flow better. So with that, I'll entertain the motion.
I'll place that in the form of a motion.
Check of the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Official business to come before the board. One, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. Esplin?
Nothing to report to the board, thank you.
Okay. Are there any committee and/or legislative reports? We'll start with Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing this morning, Madam Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing to report, but I have been active in the Meadview area in regards to South Cove and some of the issues they have up there. Thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
Nothing this morning, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Supervisor Gould?
No report, Madam Chairman.
Okay, that just leaves me. This past Thursday, I was invited by Representative Regina Cobb to attend the opioid stakeholder meeting in Phoenix. This meeting was put together by Representative Cobb to address the unintended consequences of the legislation passed in a special session last year. As we have discussed at length here, the ramifications of this legislation is hitting and hurting our constituents. We took those concerns to the governor last year, and he promised me he was going to address it at the beginning of the legislative session, and this is the start of it. We are blessed to have Representative Cobb as chairman of the Health Committee because she gets it. She understands at its core, as she was a dentist and saw firsthand the mounting issues with prescription drugs. Representatives from pharmacies, hospitals, doctors' offices, et cetera, attended this meeting. What was missing, as usual, was the voice of the people who are being affected by this mishandled legislation. This is why I should say this well-intentioned, but mishandled legislation. All of us here have heard from our constituents, story after story, about the worsening ability to either get the medications prescribed or filled at their pharmacies. I was able to fill in that blank when I told my story of my husband's last year of pain and suffering. For me, this is a top priority. If anyone out there has a story about themselves, friend, or loved one not being able to get prescriptions filled or refilled, I'm requesting that you write me. My email is hildyangus, A-N-G-I-U-S, at mojavecounty.us. I'm going to collect these stories of how law-abiding citizens are treated like drug addicts, unable to get the amount of medication that works for them, to give them some semblance of quality of life, or worse, they are cut off altogether. If you request to be anonymous, I will respect that. In fact, you don't even have to give your name. Let me know if you'd be willing to testify in Phoenix. That would involve driving down to Phoenix on your own money, but we need to have our voices heard. The legislation needs to see the face of the real crisis, in my opinion, because I have been there. I understand, and I'll request my, I will post my request on Facebook today, and I'm hoping all three newspapers will do a story on it. That's my report for today. Okay, how about a county administrator's report?
I have no report today, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Approval of the November 19, 2018 Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes.
Shall I move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Call to Public. Those wishing to address the board at the Call to Public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a Call to the Public Request to Speak Form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.01, a public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. This morning, I only have one person signed up, and that would be Jem Morgan. Come on down.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your new position. It's nice to see a fresh face among the crowd. My name, for the record, is Jem Morgan. I am a District One constituent. So I recently attended the Mojave County Water Authority meeting in Bullhead City. The most pressing issue that emerged from the meeting was the presentation by the ADWR representative regarding the status of the Colorado River Drought Contingency Plan. What I became curious about was the drought contingency plans for Mojave County groundwater. What I found online was the Arizona State Annual Drought Preparedness Report as submitted by the Mojave County Local Drought Impact Group. I would like to call the board's attention to the remarks under the Drought Related Action section of Appendix B. Quote, "Despite average precipitation during the monsoon season, much of Mojave County remains in moderate to extreme drought. There appear to be no extensive mitigation measures in effect by Mojave County municipalities at the time of this report," which was dated September 30 of 2018. The only drought mitigation responses by Mojave County that I have been able to find online related to the river water. Where is the drought contingency plan for Mojave County aquifers? Not the plan for the river water, but the plan specifically to protect our groundwater as this drought worsens. I met with a group of concerned citizens of Meadview over the weekend to look for interest in conjoint effort between the two water basins for the AMA Ballot Initiative. The Meadview Aquifer appears to be in an even more critical state of decline than even the Walupi Valley Aquifer. I created maps of the water basins based on the ADWR hydrographs. I'm going to just place this up here. What's difficult to see because of the orange is all of these red arrows. This is the Walupi Valley Basin. Those are all in decline. Now, they are also tucked out there in amongst all of that commercial agriculture. This is the Meadview Aquifer, and you can see all these red areas. Those are all wells that are in significant decline out there, every single one of them. So these maps are deeply disconcerting, and again, my question is, where is the drought contingency plan for our groundwater? So I'm really asking this board to address that issue, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, but if anyone else would like to come up and say something? Would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the Call to Public. Next up, we have a couple of presentations. First, we have an appreciation award presented to our friend, Mr. Wayne Hollins of the Golden Valley Cactus Cleaners, and it's going to be presented by Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. I think we need to postpone this because Eras is here with the certificate that I'll be presenting to Mr. Hollins, so if we could...
You want to, for next meeting?
I'll just put it on the end of this meeting, and maybe Mr. Davidson will... Oh, there you are, okay. Let's proceed.
Let's do it.
Mr. Davidson. I apologize, I did not see you in that nice suit of yours. I was looking for...
Right, not my regular attire. Chairman Angus, supervisors, board members, thank you for giving me this time to do this very important presentation. It'll be brief, so I won't hold you up too long here. 2018 was a very successful year for Eras, actually the most successful one we have on record, with 42 submitted prosecutions for felonies and misdemeanors. Additionally, we had 419 tons of trash and approximately 4,700 tires that were disposed of. And this is in part to, obviously, a good Eras staff that we've got detectives working for me, but a great deal of this goes towards the community, the volunteers, and especially to Wayne Hollins, who put in, not only does he use his own gas money, his own vehicle, a trailer that he recently acquired with his group, but he puts in his own time every day to go clean up our public lands that we share. And what this does is this frees us up to go take care of the prosecutions that I know the board has asked us to be a little more diligent on, and which I think we've shown we can do if we have a little bit of help. And so Wayne has gone way out of his way to show us that some help from the community makes a big difference. So I would ask if Supervisor Bishop would like to join me? We could present Wayne Hollins with a certificate of appreciation.
Absolutely, and I just wanted to tell Wayne and all the cactus cleaners that I really have sincere appreciation for everything that they've done over the years, not just the last couple of years, but it's been going on quite some time. And Wayne has been responsible for encouraging other groups to form in Dolan Springs, which is becoming pretty successful, and Kingman, which I understand they're looking for a new leader there in the Kingman area. So thank you, Wayne, and the cactus cleaners.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you all for this, and of course, I couldn't do it without my helpers out there helping me out. This last year, we did clean up 146,000 pounds of trash, mostly out of the Golden Valley area, 11 boats, and about 3,475 tires, and that was just last year. So we're hoping not to be able to reach that this year, but only because we hope we're getting harder to find, not because we didn't do anything. So I appreciate everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins, for all the hard work you've done over the years. We see you here continually, and it just goes to prove that one man can make a difference. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to the next presentation, which is the 2018 Colorado River Water Users' Association Conference Report to the Board, and that's going to be presented by Lois Wakamoto. Several months ago, we approved Ms. Wakamoto to attend a Water Users' Group, and this is the report from that meeting.
Good morning, Chairman Angus and Board of Supervisors. Happy New Year to all of you, and I'm hoping that this is a great year for all of us. Thank you for allowing me to attend the Colorado River Water Users' Association meeting. Originally, when I asked to attend this, being part of the steering committee for the drought contingency plan in Arizona, we thought this was going to be the ceremonial signing of a DCP plan for Arizona. However, because of the variety of stakeholders at the table and the different issues that everybody is concerned with, the DCP plan has, was not able to be ceremoniously signed at this meeting. However, going to this meeting was a continuation of working with some of the coalitions that we, Mojave County Water Authority and Mojave County have been able to make. We have made coalitions with water users that are far larger than we are, because in the scheme of things, the amount of water we have and the amount of water we use is a small amount in comparison to the city of Phoenix, or the city of Scottsdale, or Salt River Project, or Epcor. And so making these coalitions and connections has been important. The main thing that came out of, I believe I sent a copy of this brochure to Mike Hendrick's office as part of the agenda, and I believe that you were able to see some of the things that were on, hopefully you were able to see some of the things that were discussed. And the main issue was information exchange as to how we can manage the most important resource, the Colorado River. And different entities were there to present resource material from Israeli and farmers, which has been there at the top of the line in terms of how we can best use our resource. But the main thing is, the last day of the meeting, where we were supposed to ceremoniously sign the DCP, it says they celebrated the 50th anniversary of the Colorado River Basin. Brenda Berman, who is the Bureau of Reclamation Arizona person, came to this meeting, and at this meeting, you could tell that this woman was deeply concerned with what has or has not happened. Arizona is unique in what we have to do to pass our DCP. California's not exactly where they need to be, but they only have to go through their water districts. Nevada can go through their water districts. However, for Arizona to pass this drought contingency plan for the Colorado River to keep water levels in Lake Mead above a drought situation, we have to pass it through the legislature. And when Brenda Berman came to the meeting, she struggled, and you could tell that everything that she was saying was of deep concern to her. And basically, the bottom line was, if a drought contingency plan is not passed in Arizona by the 31st of January, then the federal government will take over and decide how and where the allocations and where the cuts will be made. So with that, I believe that the top priority is moving forward to make sure that we have a plan in place so that we still control what cuts and how the cuts are made. I'm not sure, I mean, I could go on forever and ever, but the meat and potatoes of this meeting was, we continued to talk to people in different areas to see if we could get concessions. We continued to keep coalitions together. We continued to get support from people that have water, like the Gila Reservation and the Krip Tribe, as well as Phoenix and Scottsdale and some of these areas. Huge concerns for Pinal County water agriculture. They are probably the ones that are going to suffer the most because they're using water that has been considered excess water. So all these things moving forward, we thought that we had a drought contingency plan that CAP had agreed on. Right now, as I understand, as things are moving, CAP is trying to reword some of the things that have come through. So as you, as we move forward this year, with the hydrology reports and everything else, we move forward to protect Mojave County water, the Colorado River. Our stand is still, no water moves off the river, and we hope that the drought contingency plan will be passed by January 3, 1st. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Wakamoto?
Thank you. Will you be submitting a report that goes into a little more detail of numbers and things like that?
What kind of report would you like? I mean, I can give you the drought contingency plan and what was supposedly agreed on there, but now has gone sideways because, tell me what you want, and I can get you the information of what you want. Do you want the drought contingency plan that was originally to be agreed on? Because now, my understanding is that everything is in flux. So that what we had agreed on for that particular meeting with CAP and ADWR at the meeting, giving their approval of moving forward, is now sideways. So I can give you a copy of the plan that was originally agreed on? Is that what you want, in terms of numbers?
Well, I didn't see the brochure you sent. I guess I haven't received it yet, so I have no idea what the...
You can have mine.
Oh. Thank you. And I know Pinal County is having problems, but the Pinal County ranchers sold all their water rights to Phoenix, isn't that correct?
Pinal County's having problems, but in the water agreement that helped the tribes get their water, Pinal County gave up some of their water. The problem with Pinal County is that the people that signed this agreement not realizing that there was going to be a drought. However, their agreement lasted until the year 2030. So you have people that signed the agreement that are probably no longer farming. You have farmers that are aware of this situation, not expecting this drought to come, that have invested, as an industry, into better resource, using water more efficiently, using the best type of irrigation that they can to do this, because they see that they're going to lose their water, looking for underground dollars to help pump water out of the aquifer. And all of this is private funding for each individual farmer, and then the drought comes. So right now, the industry is, they originally were asking for 150,000 acre feet in mitigation. That is half of the water that they were going to use originally. So in mitigation, they're asking for half of what they get. Right now, it's less than half. So these farmers are faced with continuing a business with maybe a little more than a third of the water that they had originally had. So after investing in better irrigation and things like this, they're looking at, how can I continue to farm when I've invested money to be a better farmer and use my resources more efficiently? So they're caught in a situation. From the beginning, Mojave County has said that although we are, that our firm stand is that no water off the Colorado River moves into central Arizona, thus protecting our cities and Mojave County. And that's the stand that we have been able to find partners in, and working with us to take.
Right. It's one thing in our fight or whatever to keep water here, it's my understanding that Pinal, that a lot of the farmers sold their water rights to Phoenix and were allowed to continue to farm or use that water for farming until Phoenix used, needed the water. And I'm guessing Phoenix is calling in that water now and shorting them on the water they need for the farming, which really hurts the state because they're one of the biggest agricultural producers around. So I think that's something we need to be aware of when we're fighting the fight, that if they sold their water, now want to use our water. I mean, they can't have it both ways. I mean, I hate to see the agriculture go away, but if they sold their water, it's really not up to us to replace it.
I believe they're looking for other avenues to help this. Brenda, Lisa Myers originally said that she was going to go directly to the Department of Agriculture to see if they could get grants for these farmers, because originally, by the year 2030, they were supposed to be farming out of the aquifer. So she said she would take their plight to the Department of Agriculture to see if they could get funding for grants to do well drilling and things like this to alleviate some of the problem. There's just a lot of different avenues and different things that are in play right now to try to not, you know, devastate any industry or any particular group. However... However, I believe as Mojave County and as one of the, and as a county and a water user that needs friends, we have been able to develop those friends, including the city of Phoenix, that has been supportive of us in terms of no water moves off the river to central Arizona.
Now, have you, is that group discussed? When we put the canal in or when the canal was put in, you would have thought that people would have had to use canal water, but it's my understanding that it was cheaper to pump groundwater, so they continued to pump groundwater. And then they were trying to inject that canal water into the aquifers. And I understand that it's not been as a success that they thought it would be. Did they have any numbers on all this water that's being pumped down there? I understand a lot of it's not staying in the aquifer. It's hitting and taking off.
Okay. I don't know all the different things about Pinal County ag water and the ins and the outs of what is happening down there because there have been a lot of meetings, there have been a lot of side meetings. And listening to each group, just as we remain committed to what our stand is and what is important to us, they are committed to what they feel affects the entire state in terms of agriculture because they say Pinal County not only farms in Pinal County, but it affects the feeder and this and that. So I'm not aware of all those things. I am aware of the agreement that they signed that said that they would have water until 2030, and this is 10 years ahead of schedule for their planning. So they feel that they should be helped a little bit since the agreement that they signed said that they would have water until 2030. Everybody has a different point of view on the different things, and I'm not familiar with all of Pinal County ag.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Sorry.
Mrs. Wakamoto, the logistics in the legislature to get a bill out that fast, the legislature, I believe, goes into session next Monday. The session runs in a perfect legislative world for 100 days. In reality, it runs for six months. So the governor would have to call a special session to get that bill out that fast. Have you heard any talk of the governor actually calling a special session on the matter?
Okay. I have heard that a special session may have to come about because of the deadline. And although some of the legislators believe that it was just an idle threat, for those of us that sat there and watched her do the presentation and the difficulty with which she came forward and how hard it was for her to say, you need to get this done or the federal government will take over. I do not believe it was an idle threat. I do not believe many of the people that watched her do the presentation think it was an idle threat. And I have heard that the possibility of a special session is going to have to come forward unless Arizona wants to take the chance of the federal government coming in and taking over.
So, Madam Chairman, Mrs. Wakamoto, you have not heard of the governor preparing to call a special session, then?
I've only heard rumors.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Supervisor Watson? Nothing? Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lois, and thank you for all your hard work. We know your passion in this subject.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. On to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items five through 33 will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Anyone have any items they'd like to pull?
Madam Chairman. Let's see. Number 13, number 16, number 17, number 18, number 21, and that's it.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson?
None.
Twenty-two? Twenty-two. Tip? Nothing? Okay. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items five through 33 minus items 13, 16, 17, 18, 21, and 22.
So may.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item 13 is to approve the intergovernmental agreement contract CTR-0404A2 for the STD Control Services between Arizona Department of Health and Mojave County Department of Public Health. Denise.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the board. How can I help you?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The, I read through the background information on this item, and it never really says what you're going to do to make the goals, but it does lay out a lot of goals. And I was curious, this is grant money that comes from the state, do they ever claw back their money if the goals are not met?
To my knowledge, they do not, honestly. I think they're pretty ambitious goals, and with staffing levels the way they are, we are oftentimes unable to meet those goals. We certainly make every effort to do so, but just knowing that the money is not, I mean, you can kind of see what the budget looks like. It's not substantial in any way, so we subsidize this service fairly heavily. So we do our best to meet those goals, and we try to prioritize those to best meet the community's needs. So they have never actually pushed back on us.
Madam Chairman, can, can you give me an example of what you plan to do with the money?
We do a lot of STD testing, and then we do contact tracing. So we go back and we try to locate partners of those who are infected and make sure we inform them of their partner's issue, and then make sure that we get treatment for those individuals. That's our role.
Is there any requirement of a person that comes in and gets diagnosed with a sexually transmitted disease to the, to county health, that they, are they required by law to give up the identities of their partners?
Required by law? I don't know that I can answer that question, but I can follow up and get that back to you. We certainly ask for that information, and that way we can go back to those partners. But whether or not it's required by law, I don't know. So I will follow up.
I kind of doubt it is in AIDS because AIDS has its own policies, so to speak. It's treated differently than other STDs.
Yes, true.
The other, it uses the word surveillance in there also. I saw that. I thought that was an interesting choice of words.
Well, much of our surveillance is looking at trends and looking at locations and trying to find hotspots. And if we can find those, we can provide some additional education in those communities or in those areas and target them more closely. Surveillance might also be the follow-up of those particular cases and the case management that follows as a result of those positive cases. We also provide, we document all of this in MedSys. We provide the state with information on all of our STDs so they can track. As an example, they are actually doing training with us today, this afternoon, with our nursing staff. ADHS has traveled here. And we're trying to do some more education for our own staff so that we can go out and be better resources out in the community.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? You need, want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that agenda item 13 be approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On to 16. This is to approve and sign a contract for Mojave County Law and Justice Center for the, to Johnson Carlier LLC from Tempe, Arizona, in the amount of $18,594,891. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just thought this is such a huge expenditure that it really should have some discussion before we vote.
Okay.
And that's why I removed it off of the consent agenda.
Okay. I, I think, you know, we have, we've spoken about this over the years, over and over, but it is a great opportunity to remind everybody.
Absolutely. And Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould, other supervisors, if you have any questions about the procurement process, I'll be happy to answer those for you. But I do have to say that we had really good responses to the solicitation. We had really good bids come in. The bid from Johnson Carlier is, they're an excellent company. They have, they provided all the documentation required by the bid, and it was reviewed extensively by all the stakeholders here in the county, Public Works, the architect on record, and everybody supported the award going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I understand that, did I hear right, that it came in under budget?
It came in within budget. I would have to, I would
Oh, yay.
Kind of defer the budget talks to Ms. Lloyd as well as Steve Lotosky. Another positive, this vendor is using many local subcontractors on the project, so I think it's a good way for the county.
I think that's what I heard. That was positive. Thank you.
I have some questions, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there any way possible that you think this 1.78 contingency is going to not come back and bite us?
I would really, I would defer to the experts in these type of projects to kind of speak to that more than myself. If Steve Lotosky would like to provide any input, he's dealt with these large projects and how the contingencies often work on these, and I would probably defer to him on that question.
All right. We have about $209,000 for Public Works Administration. Does that include Architect too or not?
The Architect, that does include the Architect, I believe. Yeah, we, we already have a contract with the Architectural Services, and we've already budgeted their expenses in on this project through that contract.
Is that included in this total price?
No. I'm hearing that's allocated through a separate fund that has already been allocated outside and separate from this project.
And then the, the total cost of this, the Architect fees aren't figured in, what, we spend $2 million? Somewhere around there? So we'd add that on top of this to get a total cost?
Correct. If you wanted to...
I guess I, I'm seeing that, you know, we've cut this down from, you know, we no longer have the county attorneys, probation, JP's in there. I think we're stretching a dollar here with that 1.78%. I don't know where we plan on getting the extra money, but I've, I've never seen something that's come in on, on budget and with that small of a contingency, I'm not sure where you're going to get the money from. I mean, we've gone up, or not we, but the, the country's gone up, what, about a percent a month in inflation for costs for the last, what, over, over 12 months? And with this project going on two years and with the trade wars or whatever we have going on with, with other countries, what are we going to do to lock in our costs? You know, somebody has to pass those costs on.
Mr. Lotosky, do you want to come up there? Looks like you're itching.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson. With regard to the 1.78% contingency allocation of $308,221, staff put this forward for board consideration on premise that aligns with the latest budget that the Board of Supervisors approved with the allocation of approximately $308,000 of property sales revenue to this project. It is low. This is a new construction. And what we have found in the past is we have, in fact, successfully completed projects at relatively low contingency levels. One, the Public Works building was brought in at just 0.7% contingency overall relative to the overall project cost. Now Supervisor Johnson, you bring up a very intelligent question concerning materials, and obviously we know it's a very tenuous environment right now with the tariff discussion and the general cost of materials. But this bidder, Johnson Carlier, has offered a hard bid. They absorb all of the risk that they are undertaking with regard to all of the materials that go into this work, meaning that they may see a substantial profit if materials plummet or say, something along that lines. But then they also absorb the same risk if materials escalate in price. Perhaps they have access to materials now and they've already built that cost into their bid. So I can pretty much put forward here that the project will not be affected in any way by material costs because the contractor is incumbent to hold to their hard bid. Now, the one thing that does come about with regard to contingency that we are going to be very keenly monitoring is if in the early phases of the project, if any, the subsurface work turns up something that is unforeseen. Now, we had a very skilled professional services team that did both the design for the new addition that we're contemplating today, as well as the Superior Court remodel. And, you know, they are very well versed in the architectural, design, engineering services. But nonetheless, when it comes to some subsurface work, there is that remote possibility that something is discovered that, you know, the contractor can reasonably ascertain that, no, we weren't duly informed of this, and no, this wasn't factored into our bid. And that's usually what precipitates change orders. We see that more commonplace with remodels, more so than new construction. So again, getting back to the original point, it is a somewhat low contingency estimate, but, you know, Public Works pledges that will do our level best, and we have a excellent engineering staff that will be allocated to this project. That's what the Construction Administration, the $209,000 that we'll be funding is the Public Works staff, namely a number of non-general fund funded staff that will be looking after this project closely.
And then, I know, I know when we've done work previously up there, because you bring up a good point with the sub, subsurface, we've run into the, I don't know, hard pan or whatever it is up there. So that could be, that could be a cost that could come back to be a lot of money, I guess, at some point. I mean, on those, there's no way to core drill that ahead of time to find out, so we just don't get surprised. I guess it's kind of late now to do it, but...
Supervisor Johnson, at this point, with the erection of a, of a new building, it would be our anticipation that the professional services that were delivered to develop the plans and specifications were done so in a manner that adequately accounted for the type of foundation, type of ground that, stability and strength that is present to accommodate the, the new building foundation. And yes, there is a substantial amount of site civil engineering work, but that is by and large working with, you know, above ground, you know, as existing work. We're doing some nominal improvements to Forest Street and, I'm sorry, Spring Street and the intersection at Forest. So again, pretty incumbent upon the professional services, the architect and engineer to have ascertained all of those unforeseen, so we should be...
Now, this includes all off-site work that we have to do, too?
That's correct. Yes.
That's all in there?
As well as FFNE furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and some of the court security and IT work as well.
Okay. And there is no money in here for the remodel of the old court?
Supervisor Johnson, that is correct. This undertaking is for the new building only. The overall professional services contract that Becky spoke of earlier did encompass preparation of plans, specifications, and estimate, both for the new construction as well as the Superior Court remodel. So the plans are effectively on the shelf for the remodel, but the construction does not contemplate that.
That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is probably a better question for procurement. I was curious, since this project's going to be inside the city limits of Kingman, I'm assuming then we are paying, or our contractors, paying sales tax to the city of Kingman. Is that true? Is that true?
If there would be taxable amounts within the bid, then the vendor would be responsible for those taxable items to the city or whoever the taxing agent would be for those items?
I believe that part of them will go to the city of Kingman. Some of them might go to the material suppliers in the, the location that the material supplier is based at, under what the legislature called "tax simplification",
Mm-hmm.
Which is not very simple. But I kinda have heartburn with the county building the project and then paying sales tax to a political subdivision. I don't know if anybody, other members of the board feel the same way, but to me, it just seems a little hard on the taxpayer.
Oh.
But, I don't know, that, it's, it's a policy statement. I just wanted to make sure that we're actually paying sales tax to Kingman on that, but thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Nothing? Okay. I need a motion to approve item 16. I think we'll take a roll call on this.
I'll make a motion to approve item 16.
Second.
Why, yes, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
And Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Still on consent agenda, and now it's item 17. This is, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District, number one, approving us to sign a sole source contract. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm just kinda wondering what this project is all about.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, good question. The Public Works Department through the Golden Valley Improvement District water system, we operate three stand pipes in the Golden Valley Improvement District water system distribution area, and they are very heavily used. About 25% of our customer base is stand pipe users, mainly in district users. We do get a few other district users, but getting to the point, in, about a year ago, we completed a, an upgrade of our stand pipe number one on Estrella, and what that enabled us to do is the dispenser function for the stand pipe is now upgraded to a point of being electronic and capable of accepting credit card payment in lieu of just users having to just get a stand pipe card and then have to deal with a monthly bill from, from the Golden Valley Improvement District. So what this does is, in response to tremendous positive feedback on stand pipe number one and that great convenience that we provided with regard to an upgrade to the dispenser to accept electronic payments, we are advancing the same project to stand pipe numbers two and three. And this was a project that was programmed in FY '20. However, in lieu of the recent rate increase and our healthy cash reserves at the, under Golden Valley operations, we are respectfully advancing this project for Board consideration approval to complete now and bring those convenience of payments by credit card, and users can still maintain their monthly Golden Valley Improvement District stand pipe card and just pay by, pay by the month if they wish, but that's really the essence of this overall project, to upgrade the two other stand pipes to perform same as stand pipe number one.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Lotosky, what do you expect the return on investment to be for this money? Or how long is the payback period on this?
The, this type of undertaking does not necessarily precipitate a revenue to, to the district, but merely creates a convenience. It affords a greater uptime in the sense of the flexibility of our customers having access to the water and being able to pay, so it's more of a convenience, you know, type, type of endeavor that we're creating for our customers and bringing these other two stand pipes up to 21st Century Operations. As well as it also does lend to some accuracy, if you will. We've seen tremendous levels of really precise dispensing at the stand pipe number one now with the new dispenser mechanism. It's all electronic metered, and it does afford, you know, potentially some savings to the district in terms of, you know, rolling back any lost water or any shortchanging of customers in water dispensing.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Lotosky, when a credit card's used, there, there's a function called what they call the merchant discount, which I actually referred to as the skim. That's where the credit card company skims part of my money when I give my customer the privilege of paying their bill with a credit card. Do you then have to raise your prices to reflect the fact that the credit card company is now going to skim 3% of your revenue?
As Supervisor Gould, as the convenience to the customer, yes, the customer would pay that fee. That fee would be passed along to the customer.
Was there any thought to pushing that charge back on to the person that chose to use the credit card? I believe they actually call them swipe fees, which is kinda funny if you think about it.
That's correct, yes. That's how the mechanism would work. Essentially, the district is adopting that the county's general policy and following that in terms of the user incurring that fee, the swipe fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I need a motion to approve item 17. Madam Chair, I'll make that motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. For the record, that was a no from Supervisor Gould. Item 18. This is sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Library District to approve the lease of 100 computers through an operating lease with CSI Leasing. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It appears that we lease computer equipment rather than buy computer equipment, and I, would kinda like to see a benefit cost analysis of that, because it seems to me we could buy that equipment and then use our gentleman that's, has an office downstairs behind us that sells excess county equipment to disperse of those computers. So I'm just kinda, I'd like to see a cost savings analysis between the leasing of those and if we were to purchase those outright, and not necessarily today, but I'd like to see the logic behind the decision to lease these things rather than to buy them.
Madam Chair, if I may, we looked at this quite a few years ago, Supervisor Gould. Problem is, soon as we buy our computers, they're outdated, you know, to begin with. It's actually, and they can bring you the numbers, I think you'd be, you know, quite satisfied at the amount of money we save now by leasing them, because in all the upkeep and everything is done by the, the company. We, we're able to get new computers every three years on the rotation program. They just replace them and, and give us, I mean, they charge us for them, obviously. They give them for free, but they continue to do that. They also take care of the disposal, which was a problem for us, too, so we don't have to dispose them, and then, you know, especially being in, in city government like you were, how, you know, well, we're kinda tight on money this year, so people aren't getting new computers and with the upkeep of them, it's really saved us quite a bit of money, so, I mean, I have no problem with us giving all that information to them. I think you'd be pleasantly surprised at how much money it saved the county, actually, by, by doing the lease program.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, it wasn't so much that it was against this particular one.
Right.
It just, it came up, and as things come up, I knew I'm gonna ask questions about it, so it, so I can get the information that I need to make an intelligent decision. Thank you.
Do you have your questions answered?
I do.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve item number 18.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
21. This is to approve and authorize the chairman of the board to sign a waiver letter for the four-year advanced notice requirement regarding the Arizona Department of Transportation abandonment or vacation of right-of-way is known as those portions of the right-of-way of Shinnarump Drive and West Frontage Road. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members, I pulled this off the consent agenda, 'cause I could not figure out what this project is about from the background information, so if I could, if somebody can tell me what is this project and what's it about, I would appreciate it.
Basically, what it is, we have about a mile of frontage road there that is controlled, has been controlled...
Mr. Patterson, one moment, please.
Yes.
If you'll please identify yourself.
Oh, Duane Patterson, owner of the land, co-owner of the land.
Thank you.
Yeah, as I mentioned, there's about one acre, or one mile of frontage road there that has been controlled by ADOT. We have a business that's wanting to locate to the county propane distribution, they're a national distributor. When we approached ADOT, they wanted approximately, they wanted the road brought up to interstate standards, which the bids we received were gonna be in excess of a million dollars for an $80,000 piece of property, didn't make a lot of sense. I believe, I'm also a broker, Remax Prestige Properties, do a lot of commercial industrial development. We're gonna see this along Interstate 40 in a lot of areas where company, companies wanna develop their property. Been dealing with Mike Hendricks and Steve Lotosky for probably a year on, on getting a program worked out on this, where basically the state would sign it over to the county. We are going to employ Ted Cook, TLC Excavating, he takes care of the roadways in Walnut Creek and Lazy YU, to keep the road in, in good maintenance condition.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So basically, what you want us to do is accept the responsibility that's ADOT's right now, 'cause that's a frontage road.
That is a frontage road, and I don't know exactly on the, the responsibility. We have agreed that we're going to take care of the maintenance. It's a very low usage, they'll have approximately two trucks a day in and out on the property.
Right, and the problem I have is, we, we get these situations, where we've had them before, where somebody comes in and it's gonna be a, a small business, and on that frontage, where I think they, what they want is paved, and that's, I'm guessing that's where the consternation on your people's part is, but that's part of doing business, because if we start bringing things in, and obviously I wanna see a business come in, but if we don't pave the roads, then you're, then you have a problem. You know, now we're accepting a responsibility from ADOT. They'll be out of it, I'm sure they're, they're happy to do that, and then as far as they, they go on at Mr. Hendricks, um, are we gonna own just part of that frontage road and ADOT owns the rest?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, what had been, what had been discussed is, you know, the requirement that ADOT was imposing on this business going in off this frontage road, and it was making it cost prohibitive. I believe Alvin Stump, the ADOT district engineer, came to the county and said, "Well, you know, as far as the state is concerned, if the state is involved, that is gonna be the standard. However, we would entertain turning the road over, the, the right-of-way over, at least the first mile of right-of-way for that roadway over to Mojave County." And that's all we're contemplating. That's my understanding today. As far as improving the roadway, and that's another story, you know, there's, there's two issues. One, accepting the right-of-way for the roadway from ADOT, and under statute, ADOT's required to give the county four years' notice unless we waive that requirement, so what we're doing in this particular action is actually waiving that statutory requirement for ADOT's notification and request that the county take over the roadway. Second part of, of the project would be, this project would have to go through planning and zoning and their requirements, so whether the road is gonna be paved or unpaved is gonna be up to Mojave County planning and zoning, the commission, and then ultimately the Board of Supervisors to make the final decision. So whatever's decided for the roadway is gonna be the responsibility of the property owner or the business that's going in there to bring that roadway up to whatever standard is decided. The other question is gonna be, once that roadway is brought up to the standard that's determined, is the county gonna make, accept that roadway for maintenance and accept it into our maintenance system? So that's a different and separate part. At least, what I would be looking at recommending to the board at this time, unless the applicant is, is willing to bring that roadway up to substantial standard that wouldn't impact county funding for quite some time, let's say, build a roadway that would have a longevity of 15 to 20 years, that we would make arrangement that, that the developer would maintain his own roadway. And there also is another upside to this particular action for the Board of Supervisors to consider, is this area has the potential for additional businesses to come in. So by county accepting the road right-of-way, at least to administer over the right-of-way, it benefits and allows this business, particular business, to come in to, and to develop in Mojave County, but it also has the potential for other businesses to come into the area. So that, we thought it was a good thing, that's why we wanted to place it in front of the board for a business decision, and thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam, oh. Madam Chair, should go on that. The business is a good business, and I, and I think it'll save everybody money, but I think the, the question that we have to ask is, I mean, we, we should, and we did the winery or whatever we did here, up here in, in the area before, where we took the road in, we didn't make the people pave the road, and then the county had to come back and pave the road. I think when you're doing businesses, that's, that's part of doing business. Now we're gonna take a part of a, a frontage road, and like the county manager's saying, that area could be developed and should be developed, and this has nothing to do with their business. I think it's an excellent idea. I, I think that's the cost of doing business, and when we're bringing in, you know, especially this business runs heavy trucks, and, and they might only be running two trucks a day, I don't know, and that's beside the point. I think the roads need to be, you know, brought up to a standard, and we're taking in a road, and then maybe we require that the road has to be paved up to our standards, and they're not willing to do it, and now we've taken over part of a, a road. I mean, we could take the whole road or no, no part of it. I think we're getting just a piece of the, the puzzle here. I'd rather see us get the, you know, the whole thing down at one time. Those are my concerns. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hendricks, is there any, you know, is there any way to renegotiate this so we can take into consideration some of Supervisor Johnson's comments, and, you know, is there a, is there a happy ending for everybody?
Madam Chairman, I, I believe what the board is considering is to waive the requirement with the intent that the county take over the right-of-way of this roadway. Whether, whether, you know, the level of improvement that's gonna be required of this developer is gonna be up to the, in essence, in accordance with Mojave County standards and up to the Board of Supervisors, and whether that roadway, at, at some later date, and whether that roadway is accepted for maintenance by the board, that's gonna be up to the board to decide also, and at any time that the board wants to stop the maintaining of an accepted road, they can certainly do that also. So the intent is clear at this time on what is in front of you, that the board is considering accepting the first mile of roadway up past this property. It's a mile of roadway. Is that correct, Steve? And am I missing anything on that assessment that the board needs to actually contemplate with this decision? Madam Chairman, if you don't mind?
No.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, County Manager Hendricks, I believe you've been right on point in the context of how this actually would carry out. Basically, what's being contemplated today is removing ADOT as a stakeholder in the overall development of the subject parcel, and the county at this point only assuming responsibility for the administration of the public right-of-way, but no maintenance responsibility. And I will put forward to the board that I have worked diligently with planning and zoning with my colleagues, Tim Walsh and his staff, in presenting, and again, I have to rely on the applicant and developers trafficking, especially truck estimates, but, you know, offering up engineering analyses that would tie what would reasonably need to occur in the longer term for maintenance that the developer would have to acknowledge and, and say own up to through a maintenance agreement, so that the, right-of-way, the own up to through a maintenance agreement, so that the, right-of-way, the public right-of-way does not, you know, unduly deteriorate. And I think we, you know, can meet that expectation, both of the applicant, while removing the onerous types of standards that ADOT was imposing, but as County Manager Hendricks pointed out, should the developer at some point in time in the future, you know, desire to pursue county maintenance, then we would, you know, very uniformly, just as we have for everyone else, public and private, residents and businesses, I should say, impose that they follow all applicable county standards to bring it up for maintenance.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Yeah.
We've been working on this project almost for two years. This is in Supervisor Bishop's district, but I was involved also.
Right, I've been trying to speak, so.
And it's not, it's not a real easy situation to deal with. The location of the property and its proximity to I-17 and the traffic that runs there, so this is the best solution that we could come to on this. I'm very much in favor of it. As far as economic, economic development dollars, this would be well-spent, and we're not spending any Mojave County dollars. So at some point in time, I'll be making a motion for accepting item number 21.
Okay, and I apologize to Supervisor Bishop, she's been trying to...
I have, I feel like I'm being bullied this morning, so, this is in my district, and I'm very much in support of it, and like Supervisor Watson said, we have been working with Mr. Patterson and with ADOT and Public Works, and, and this is just the first step of many steps that Mr. Patterson will have to, to go through. And it also, there are other parcels out there that are available for sale, and it's my understanding that there'll be more businesses coming up that frontage road is, is approved this morning.
Okay, so you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a question, Mr. Lottowski. I'm guessing, because I've been involved in this, two people have called me on it, and I've talked to ADOT. The reason this company is coming to us is obviously because they want lesser standards than what ADOT has. Now, this frontage road is basically, can only be used for, I mean, it's not going to be residential, it's going to be commercial use, and we're just taking the one mile, and that road goes how far? How, that frontage road is how long?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, the road is approximately one mile we are accepting, or offering for the board's consideration, the acceptance from Shinnawong Road, about a mile south, I believe it's Black Rock Road, that intersecting Black Rock is a unmaintained road, but it does shoot across open highway, so, you know, it kind of wraps right around that developing area of a commercial. But getting back to ADOT, I guess where ADOT is really asserting, you know, their hard position is the fact that, as of today, it is still ADOT right-of-way, and basically the developer would have to gain an access, a right of access from the state, and it's just part of the general state policy to approach these access requests in such a manner as requiring a substantial amount of improvement, so there's really no intermediate solution as a county, you know, can potentially offer through a road maintenance agreement. ADOT basically asks, through their right-of-access permit requests, that the road simply be brought up to a state standard, and as Mr. Patterson alluded to, it's a substantial standard at that.
Right, but haven't they lowered their standards? Going to note again with, it was concrete, and they've lowered it to asphalt going in and for heavy truck loads, because even though, as we all know, you might have one business that has light truck deliveries, and then the guy down the road has heavy trucks coming in, because that's what hopefully, if the economic development goes on, and then we've got a road that's not quite up to standard. That's just my problem. I have no more questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve item number 21.
I'll take the motion.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Supervisor Watson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we still have one more consent agenda, and that is 22. I'll approve and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, the assignment of franchise from Perkins Mountain Utilities, Inc. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. I pulled this because of the letter that we all received a copy of from Mr. Richard Proctor Eversole, Proctor Holdings, and the last sentence in this letter is that he requests that Nevada Trust Company and/or Proctor Eversole Properties in White Hills not be referenced as a party to any water franchise administration. So I'm, I just want to clarify what our standing is in this franchise agreement, so I'd like to ask Mr. Eskman if he could clarify that before we take a vote, because I'm not sure what, what our position is in this. It looks like it's a business transaction, and our involvement is, is just the right-of-ways?
Yeah, I, I've looked at this letter before the meeting, and then I just grabbed it again. I, I don't understand what this, what, what the person is saying in this letter, how it impacts the assignment. All it is, is it's, the franchise is the right-of-way, the ability to fix your, your, your pipes, you fix your lines, fix your electrical, whatever it is, the, your franchise that you have, and we, I believe the contemplated motion is to assign that to another company, so I don't understand how the creditor in the original land transaction would have any kind of bearing on this at all. I don't understand how this, how this letter has any bearing on the assignment at all.
Actually, I didn't either, I was a little confused. That's why I polled it, just to, to get some clarification, but I believe the, the representative is here in the audience, and... Good morning, if you could just give your name and address, and, and tell us what's on your mind on this.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tom Treeacre, I'm the manager of Alda Eversole Trust Properties in White Hills. Of all the properties we had, we had 2,000 acres we sold to Jim Rhodes back in the day. Unbeknownst to us, as the creditor, he incorporated a water franchise on the 2,000 acres that we subsequently had to foreclose and take back. Perkins Mountain, only, the only properties Perkins Mountain represents as being in their franchise, and White Hills is our property, which we claim, because of the foreclosure, because of the non-acknowledgement, is not part of their franchise. And when it came out in the, and it came out with the notice that there was a name change basically from Perkins Mountain to Utilities, Inc., servicing White Hills, we objected. And that's, that's kind of the point of the letter. This is one of the things we'll have to work out with Arizona Department of Water Resources and Arizona Corporation Commission, but we just couldn't let this go by without at least acknowledging the fact that we have an issue with Perkins Mountain, so.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I still don't, I mean, I, what, what the contemplated action is, if, if you want to come back, contemplated action is, you know, one company had a franchise, and, and all it is, is the right-of-way to be able to fix your pipes and lay your pipes and various things in the ground, and be able to address, and is that, now they want to assign it to another company. I, I just...
Well, when you incorporate a water franchise on an area, it really becomes restrictive of how you develop that area. And we didn't know that the, our properties were encumbered by the franchise while Jim Rhodes was in contract. We foreclosed, and normally when you foreclose, you get rid of all that mess that was associated with that ownership. This is one of those things we didn't know about, and it wasn't until we saw the notice that, that we realized we had a, we had an issue with a lien that somehow survived the foreclosure. So we're trying to go back and clean all this up, but it really, it really hinders us, and when, when they make reference to our property, which is the only property I believe Perkins Mountain represents as servicing in White Hills, we'd like to kind of protest that, and acknowledge the fact that we have an issue that we want to get around. So they don't have any, they don't have any infrastructure in White Hills, they don't have any, any wells, any pipelines, or anything, but they're saying, saying that they claim the rights to administer our infrastructure, and that's what we object to.
Your infrastructure? I don't understand that, but you don't have any infrastructure in there.
Well, servicing, if we, if, if you develop a subdivision, and you have to put in water for homes.
Certainly.
They have a...
They would have, they would have the right-of-way. They would have, that franchise is essentially what's saying. So your, your, your position is you're objecting to that, because you may not, you may not, I, I can see that. I can see why you would, would feel that way, they say, "Hey, we don't want this, we want to do our own, we want to create our own," or whatever it is.
We want to have control of it, basically.
Exactly, I see what you mean now. Okay. So basically, basically, right now, let me get the players here. So right now, Perkins Mountain Utilities has the franchise. They want to assign it, or the proposed action is to assign it to Utilities Bermuda Water Company. The problem that this gentleman has is that you own the property, right? And if you ever want to develop it, put in a water system and things like that, we would, you would have to go through Utilities Bermuda Water Company, because they have the franchise.
Right.
I can see that. I guess you could create your own franchise of, I mean, I, I would have to look...
Yeah, we have, we have the ability to prove up, create our own franchise. The question was, though, is we didn't know that Jim Rhodes encumbered our property with the franchise. Normally, as a lender, you would have, you'd have to ratify that, and you'd, you'd have the right to object to that. And normally, you object to that until they pay the property off and it's free and clear, and they own it, then they can control it that way. But since, since we were never notified, or we never had the right to approve or, or not approve, it makes it really problematic for us to proceed.
Got it.
Mr. Eskman, do you think with this new information, does the county have any liability if we do this today, going forward?
I doubt that you'd have liability, but I don't know if you want to do it today. I think this is new information we weren't aware of, and I think that, I think you would want to dive more into this and find out more information.
Okay, so we'll continue it?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, I'd recommend you continue it, find out some more information, and then make a business decision. I mean, going into this, I thought it was a pretty straightforward an assignment, we're just assigning it to another company, but I can see now why this, the owner of the land would have concerns about it, and, and we're talking about, if he owns the land, he's going to want, he's going to want to have a say in this. And, yeah, so I would recommend to hold off on it.
Okay. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Mike wants to speak.
Okay, Mike.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that I'm correct of the understanding that when we talk franchise or license agreement, and the county getting involved in that, that that is solely for the use of our right-of-way, has nothing to do with actually approving or, or condoning or making any requirements in relationship to who has responsibility for water or anything else, any other utilities out in the area, so, and, and we can offer franchises to multiple utilities, and we do, and that's, that's just the process. So I just want to make sure that the board has an understanding that we're not actually approving and making a sole use out there by this particular action.
That's certainly, I'd agree with that. I just, I'd like to look into a little bit more before I make a decision, but I, but the county manager is correct. I mean, that's, we're not saying we're transferring water or anything like that, and, and I believe we can do multiple franchises, but I think you would want to know more about this before you make a decision.
So our legal counsel says that he would suggest that we continue it, so I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question for, for Mr. Treeacre. Basically, what you want to do today is to make sure that this is on the official record for you to use as you go forward with your fight, is that correct?
That's correct. We're just, you know, we're just trying to sort through this and find out what our, our risks are and how it affects our property, because this is relatively new to us, so, so we're, you know, it may turn out that we may be doing something with Perkins Mountain and subsequently Utilities, Inc., but we just don't know yet, because we've just discovered a lot of this here just recently, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I'll, did you make a motion, Supervisor Bishop? Okay. I'll make a motion for the acceptance of item number 22 to table it for...
Continue it until the next meeting. I think the next meeting will give us enough time.
Continue, until we can get some resolution to. I can only imagine the difficulty the owner of the property is going through under the specter of Mr. Rhodes' ambitions over the years, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue, and a second. Let's take a roll call. Supervisor Watson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We're done with the consent agenda, so we're on to the regular agenda now. This one brought by Ryan Eskman, it was our executive session. I believe no action needs to be taken on that, correct?
That's correct, unless you wish to take something else, but you don't need to necessarily. We're not recommending that you take any action at this time.
Okay. So we'll go on to 35, brought to us by Development Services Director Tim Walsh, and that's discussion and possible action to approve and adopt the construction and post-construction stormwater Entertainment, entertainment, I'll entertain the motion or discussion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve, item number 35.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to get an explanation of what this is about.
Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Gould, what this is, is in the 2010 census, the population of Havasu grew to the, to the amount to where it was considered by Arizona Department of Environmental Equality as an urbanized area. So with that, certain restrictions were, were imposed relating to stormwater management. We've seen a number of these come through, through this past year, they basically gave us a timeframe to establish a stormwater management program, and, and we've done that. As part of this program, this particular item establishes the stormwater pollution prevention plans. So basically, the, the overall program are, are things that have already been required by Arizona, or by Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. However, when an area reaches an urbanized designation, the local authorities now get to participate in, in that oversight as well. We're mandated by state, by the state to, to participate in that. So what this particular portion is, is generally when a contractor or developer wants to develop a, a piece of property, if it's disturbing more than an acre of land, they have to develop what's called a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And what that does is, is during the construction of the site and following construction of that, they have to implement certain measures so that if it, if the storm comes during construction, that the runoff from that site will not be polluted and, and cause problems downstream. So basically, what you'll see is, a lot of times around construction areas, you'll see that silt fence going in around it, or they'll put in waddles and stuff like that to slow down the water, they'll also have detention basins, things like that. What this actually does is, is in addition to them having to submit to the state, they also now have to submit to us, and this is only for those areas adjacent to Lake Havasu City that were defined as urbanized areas through that census.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
So, Mr. Walsh, this is going to create an additional burden on development in the north of Lake Havasu City?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, essentially, it's work that the, the developers would already be doing, just in addition to submitting to the state, they would be submitting to us as well for review.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Walsh, are the, are requirements the same as the state's?
They are.
But it would require them to, to fill out additional paperwork with the county?
That, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Need a motion?
Motion and a second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second, sorry about that. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. On to item 36. This is to approve under terms of the standing Mojave County lease with ARC, which is an organization that aids the mentally challenged for lease of the building and property at 2050 Airway Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Any second?
I'd like a little discussion.
Okay.
This property is located in Kingman, and the surrounding areas don't seem to have a lot of mobile, mobile homes or offices in them, other than the library, and we'll be removing that modular building, so. I did go out and, and look at this mobile home, and it's, it looks like a decent building, but we're going to put it in the, in the midst of a lot of commercial property, and it's also Mojave County's commercial property, so... So, I'm not sure how, how this modular home is going to affect the value of Mojave County's commercial property, which is, which is prime and valuable. I don't, I don't know if this mobile home would, would bring down the value of the surrounding properties. So, Mr. Lakowski could address that for me? Basically, it's, it's a double-wide modular home, right? With skirting and a ramp going up to it.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop, I believe the backup should contain some photos of the public work, correct, of the public works inspection? Currently, it's at the Los Nieves School, and Mojave County ARC had acquired this building through a donation by Unisource Energy. And as it is proposed to us, Mojave County ARC, of course, will assume all expenses for relocation, placement, as well as adherence to all city of Kingman requirements. I do understand through our staff that the structure will be sited behind some already shielded fencing, so that it basically prohibits being able to view it from the street side, the Airway Avenue side, up to a point of about six feet tall. So, and then there'll be certain enhancements as well that if the executive director was here, maybe he could embellish upon them enhancements, but it'll be brought up to us, type of a standard for classroom-type use.
I'm not opposed to, to the classrooms there. I think that's a valid use of, of the building. I'd prefer to see a stick-built building there rather than, than a temporary modular home. So, I, I think eventually Mojave County may take this property back once the lease is up, and then we would be required to probably abate the mobile home so that the value would, would be such as it is. The main building is a stick-built building. So, my concern is that in the, in the future, are we going to have to abate this modular home in order to bring our property back into a sellable parcel? That, that was just my concern, I wanted that in discussion, so.
Okay.
I have a question, Madam Chair. What year is this trailer?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, I do not know.
See, that's part of the problem I have. We have no, we weren't able to inspect this trailer or anything, and it becomes our property. You know, we've already got one fine trailer out there on a park right now that doesn't meet up to standards. I, I think, you know, before I have any kind of support, they're going to have to have some kind of report on the trailer, and I have the concerns that Supervisor Bishop has regarding, you know, bringing a mobile home into the area. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do you want to continue this to get more information?
I'll make a motion that we deny based on the information that we have now.
Do I have a second for that denial?
Well, second.
Okay, we have a motion of denial and a second. Any discussion?
Well, there are other ways to cure this problem. I think Supervisor Johnson indicated that all he wanted was to make sure what year the modular was and what kind of shape and condition it was. I think we're being a little hesitant to say just flat-out no to retired citizens that'll be using this facility.
Okay, we have a motion. But could, could they not bring it back on the agenda once we, we are satisfied? I mean, deny it for now and then let them bring it back up?
Which is the best way of doing that? Is that the best way?
What we could, it could be, it would be through the motion to reconsider. It'd be brought back by the people who brought, who, who made the motion. This would be those who voted in favor of the denial if it passed. I would rather, if, if you intend to bring it back, I would just take no action on it. Take no action, and then it could be brought back, that'd be a little bit easier to do it, rather than vote on it, no denial, vote on a denial. If you want to deny it, then you say, hey, we do the motion to deny it, deny it. But if you, if you, if your intention is to try to bring it back in the future, it'd be easier if you just took no action on it today, and then bring it back at a later time.
Okay, I, I can accept that and withdraw my, my motion. But I'd also like to bring the city in on this when it's brought, when we bring it back up again, have a city representative give their input.
Okay, so you withdrew your motion and the second, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, I have no motion now.
No choice, okay. So, I need a new motion.
Or take no action.
Just take no action.
Yeah, and if there's no motion, it'll die for lack of emotion.
Okay, we're going to take no action, and we're going to move on. To item 37. This is to accept the recommendation of Public Lands and Recreation Commission for the Board of Supervisors to approve and submit a letter to the Kingman Field Office of the Bureau of Land Management requesting that National Old Trails Highway from Apache Road to Knox Drive in Yucca.
Madam Chair, I have some questions.
Sure.
Make sure I'm on the right one.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. There's a plan in place, or there's, people are able to go in online and do these roads if they have problems and stuff. This committee doesn't think that they have to bring every, every road to us, do they? I mean...
No, actually, I think this was a recommendation from the county. Do you want to come up and? Yeah, no, that's not going to happen, Supervisor Johnson.
Chairman Johnson, Madam Chair, this was a recommendation of the committee, but it was brought to the, the board with regards to public works. And the fact is, this is an actual county-maintained road. And the fact is, it's a county-maintained road. It was our recommendation to the commission that this be maintained open. And BLM's TMP, they actually had it recommended to be closed, and that's why this recommendation was made.
All right, then, did you go to BLM when this process was going on and ask them to remove it?
This was after the fact, when the public works did further due diligence and analysis of the TMP, that it was brought to our attention from engineering that this was an actual road that was county-maintained, and hence the reason why we are recommended on top. The BLM, if you remember in the meetings, they did state that they would still be accepting comments from the county, so we felt it was important to bring this to their attention.
So, with all the time and the public comment periods, we never noticed that they were closing one of our roads that we maintained?
This was, answer the question, yes. It was just as we further get into our analysis. When you're dealing with 1,600 miles of roads, it was one that was brought to our, you know, to our attention, of which we then wanted to bring it to the commission.
I guess, did we call BLM? I've never had a problem with it when they made a mistake and they removed stuff. I'm not sure how it got to us.
Right. Here again, the commission's not going to make phone calls to the BLM. The commission's, is by the bylaws, is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. At that point, the Board of Supervisors will sign the letter. The chairman will sign the letter, that'll go to the BLM with this request.
Right.
But you're a county employee, correct?
Correct.
Right, so all you had to do was get ahold of the county manager, and he'd have made a phone call and said, hey, it looks like we got a mistake here. And BLM would have said, hey, sorry, we made a mistake, or tough luck, we're not going to redo it. I, I don't get why you, as a county employee, would go to the commission to have them do something when you work for the county and we have a Board of Supervisors. That's why I'm not...
The commission was put, you know, forward because these are people who are on the ground and may see things that we wouldn't ordinarily see. And, and I think it's just a formality, it gives it more weight to have the county do it. And, and I think that that's the way BLM actually would rather be. I mean, it's in writing, it's, it's not just a pick-up phone call that they can come back later and say, oh, we don't remember that phone call. And I, I don't really see the big deal of it.
Madam Chair, that's a very good point. And Supervisor Johnson, I'd like to add that the, during the TMP review process, they do require all comments to be in writing, and it's something that we just can't call up, I just can't call up Amanda, let's say, at the BLM sitting and remind them we had, they wanted in writing. And based on that, we felt it was important to bring it to the Public Lands and Recreation Commission, and because they're, they were appointed by the board, and we felt it was important that it came from them as a recommendation to the board.
I guess the problem I have is, if the county has, if we see some kind of problem, employees, they bring it to the, to the board, the county, through the county manager to do things. And, and yes, you can just call up BLM and say, hey, you guys have put one of our roads on, and they take them off, they've done it down in, in the district I'm in all the time when things like that happen. That's all, I just don't want to see them be taking stuff to a commission when it could be handled at the county level. That was all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. On this item today, 37, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 38.
Chairman Angus, before we go further, I apologize. If I can make a point of order.
Sure.
On one item, I would ask, actually, we go back to the agenda item 36. While you were discussing this, I was looking back at the item. And if we go back to item 36, Mojave County ARC is asking for our approval. We ought to give them an answer denying the request. If that's the board's wish, we ought to do that, because they're asking for approval to build. If we take no action, we're not giving them an answer. So, I, I, I think we ought to take a motion on this. If you wish to deny it at this time, that way you deny it, then you, then we send that answer to them. And if you want to bring it back, then you can bring it back as a motion to reconsider. I think that'd be the better course of action.
And then it's, it's beholden on them to come and, you know, ask again and give the information that is requested by the supervisors?
That's correct. And then those who voted, voted in the motion that won, those who voted in the affirmative could then, any one, any one member could bring it back to the board under a motion to reconsider.
Okay, how do we go back now?
So, just go back, call, let's call back?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we got a lot, a lot of talk there for not having a reconsideration. I'd make a motion to reconsider item number 36.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, back to 36.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I will reinstate my original motion that we deny this action until such time as we get more information.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion second. Let's do the roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
I'm going to vote yes merely for the purposes of reconsideration.
And Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion to deny carries.
Okay, so we did that correctly, right, Mr. Espen?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Okay, so now we're on to item 38. And this is discussion and possible action to approve a parking agreement between Mojave County and Edgewater Gaming LLC and special event permit for the 2019 River Regatta to be held on August 10, 2019, and further approve the Regatta Revenue Plan and Davis Camp Lodging and Rispan Package Rates. I do have a couple of people signed up to speak, and we're going to hear from them first. Mr. Frank Flynn, if you'll come down and give your name and address, please, for the record?
Thank you. I oppose question 38.
Name, please, your name and address?
Excuse me?
I need your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Frank Flynn, 7460, Park Hall Drive, Mojave Valley, Arizona, 86440.
Thank you.
Vote no to the lease Davis Camp Park, Edgewater Gaming, for 2019 Regatta, and here's some of the reasons. It's very unpopular, it's dangerous, it's unhealthy, a burden to the environment with pollution to the river and coast, highways, and a cost to the taxpayers of Mojave County. What's described in the lease of Davis Camp Edgewater Gaming in Laughlin, Nevada, if approved, the Davis Camp Park will be non-access season pass holders on August 10, 2019. That means that I cannot use my park on that day because on that day, Edgewater Gaming is the temporary owner. Looks to me like a losing deal for the taxpayers of Mojave County. Rent $35,000, and the county employees, which are on Mojave County payroll, get to sell Edgewater Regatta tickets. It gives the appearance that Mojave County is subsidized by Edgewater Gaming. Has anyone made a financial account for the parks used last year, 2018? It seems there's no records to cost or profit. It seems to be difficult to calculate due to some unknown factors. Unpopular, last year, Bullhead City in regards to 2018 Regatta had a town hall meeting. Supervisor Angus and Mayor Bradley in the poll voted no, along with the people of Bullhead City, not to have the Regatta. However, Mayor Brady, for some unknown reason, later changed his mind and went against the poll, poll vote, and let the Regatta go on. How it, how it made out here in the supervisors' meeting after that, I have no idea because I was away at the time. However, I'm willing to bet that Supervisor Angus voted no again. So, dangerous, now with recreation marijuana legal in Nevada and against the law in Arizona, along, along with marijuana and alcohol, when boating, swimming, or any other water sports, it's a no-no. The Regatta defies all the rules of safety. All safeguards are canceled for the Regatta. There's a danger also to shooters and terrorists and copycat record breakers. It's unhealthy because of the urine in the water, it was urine in the pool in Bullhead City.
Mr. Flynn, can you please wrap it up? Because you have, your three minutes is almost up.
I can't hear you, honey.
Can you wrap up it, because your three minutes is almost up?
Okay, I'm done, right?
Okay, I, I just want to set something straight, because I've been, I've been hearing this out in the public. The citizens of Bullhead never voted whether or not they wanted the Regatta. They never voted on it. The city council voted to end it when the city was controlling it. Then Marnell Gaming came, they wanted to buy the licensing of it. That's what the city council, that's what Mayor Brady changed and voted to sell it to Marnell Gaming. But there was never a vote of the people. I just want that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Okay.
Okay. Sure.
Mr. Flynn? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Flynn? Just to let you know, obviously, we weren't here last year. This group rented the entire park for a total of $75,000. And at that point, you're right, the citizens weren't allowed to go in there without going through the River Regatta. This, this year, they're coming back wanting to only use part of the park and reduce the amount they're going to pay us, so it actually would be open to people from the park. So, that's the decision that's on today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flynn. And we have Tim Williams here.
Good morning, Madam Chair, county supervisors. Thank you for the time and the opportunity. Timothy Williams, 6418 Marigold Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona, made 6440. So, appreciate, like I said, the time and effort that you have. But we come before you once again, I'm also chairman of the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe. I've also assumed the role of chairmanship of the 10 tribes organization. So, I was at Krua also, so there's a lot of, we heard a lot about water today. But I want to get right to the point with my three minutes on a couple of things. And I'm going to be reading directly, and I don't know if you have this document before you. There's been a lot of talk about what could happen, what might happen. But in this report, this is the Laughlin River Regatta Post-Auction Report, prepared for the United States Ghost Guard. So, I'm making these statements based on this document, not on just my own opinion. And in that opinion, or in this document, it states this, that trash, and this is from their website, this is what was given to all the, all the participants. Trash, it is against the law to litter. The entire event will be video-recorded. It'd be asked if that recording could be available also for the county supervisors. Policy, please dump all trash, and to the designated trash can be at the park. Most trash gathered at the Regatta is recycled. Do your part, keep the river clean, pack it in, pack it out. You must throw away all your trash property. Do not sink or throw the trash in the river. If you do not want, if you do not want to use a tube, cooler, or anything else brought with you, throw it away properly. All attendant, unattended items will be thrown away immediately. Now, I go back to that point of do not sink or throw away trash... Now, I go back to that point of do not sink or throw away trash in the river. In this document, the dive shack recovered eight hundred pounds of trash. Eighty-five percent of it, they claim is old, fifteen percent of it, they claim is new. So a hundred and twenty pounds of new trash was put into the river, according to this document, and according to what they recovered. And we continue to applaud this event of doing a good job, but I don't know about you and the citizens of Mojave County, but we don't like trash going into our river for any way, shape, and form. But we do have that. And I'm going to hurry up because my time is running out. There was seventy-four, when it comes to the medically, there were seventy-four, again, I'll repeat, seventy-four people that went to the first aid trailers for injuries, including alcohol-induced, altered mental status, heat exposure, chest pain, and near drowning, two ankle sprains led, and arm injuries, seizures, and migraine. Thirty-six were transported to Warham C, and four were transported to Valley View. So this is definitely a danger. And I go back to the mission, the last part, as my time's running out. The mission of Mojave County is to serve its citizen through efficient management of resources and the promotion of cooperation among communities. The promotion of cooperat, of cooperation among communities in a visionary manner that enhances the lives of those served. In our humble opinion, on behalf of the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe, we'd like to offer that this, this event does not hold those same values that us, as a county, agree to in our own mission statement. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have the applicants here. If you'd like to come up and...
I don't know.
Does the board have questions about this? Anyone?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Good morning, Chairman Angus and Supervisors. Thank you for having us today. I'd be willing to answer any questions, or if you wanted me to go over a recap of some of the things that were said, however you'd like to do that.
Probably ought to start with your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Ryan Walker, three-seven-five-five, CS Drive in Bullhead City. I am the general manager of the Colorado Valley and Edgewater Casinos in Loughlin, also applicant for the use of Davis Camp for the River Regatta.
Thank you, Ryan. I just have a couple of questions. We met in my office last year, prior to this agreement.
We did.
It's been indicated there's a hundred and twenty pounds of new trash on the river. As I recall, when you came to our office, you had already cleaned the river one time. Do you recall the number of tons that you cleaned up prior to the event last year?
Yes. We did perform a river cleanup in December of two thousand seventeen, which was prior to our meeting. After that, we also conducted two more events, plus a post-event in September of eighteen. Those four events in total, over four tons of trash was removed from our river. This would be in an area basically from Davis Camp all the way to the southernmost point of Rotary Park, was the areas concentrated on. We also sponsored the Rock and River Cleanup in Topak, where they also removed a substantial amount of trash.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that these folks are trying to be the best steward that they possibly could for, for the Colorado River. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. And if I may speak to the trash piece, completely understand the thought from Chairman Williams, as well as other citizens, about adverse effect on the river and the community. However, I do want to point out that this is the only event with a measured and a response to the effect the event has on the river. As you know, our river is used every day, and very, very much so during the summer months. As I just told you in that figure, four tons of trash in four events subsequent to our event tells you that that river is polluted every day. That river is used every day. The amount of trash removed from the event itself was over fifteen tons. Now, that's not all in the river. That's mostly our participants, and we hail our participants as doing a good job of packing it in and packing it out. This would be all refuse removed from Davis Camp, Rotary Park, and the event goers themselves. So, the dive shack report, the fifteen percent, it's a valid point. It could be new trash. I do want to point out, though, that if you look at the items removed, which there was a detailed listing provided, that not all of those items are relative to the event goers themselves. Fishing lures, fishing line, plastic trash bags. And if I could remind the board, too, that we did have one hell of a storm immediately following the Regatta event, which all the tributaries fed into the Colorado River with the rainfall that we received. So, to the point is, is that this event comes with a contingency plan to be responsible and to clean up after the event itself, pre and post.
Okay. Answer your question?
Sure.
Okay, anybody else?
Not of, not of, not of this gentleman, no.
Chairman Supervisor Bishop?
No. I just want to thank Mr. Walker and his team. I believe you fulfilled all the promises you made me in, in your office. And I live in Bullhead City, and those beaches along the river were pristine just hours after the event happened. I didn't hear any instances, I didn't hear anybody unhappy, except, of course, the people who are against it for philosophical reasons. And I understand that. This has been a, a big debate in our city for many, many years. So how many people ended up participating?
We had a little over ten thousand, ten thousand four hundred.
And at the high, how many were there? At the high, during, like, twenty-eight thousand or something years ago?
Oh, I'm sorry. In two thousand sixteen, it was over thirty-two thousand.
Right. So it's, it's really been scaled back. And how many people do you expect this year? What are you anticipating?
Well, we've asked for a participant cap of eighteen thousand, which is actually four thousand less than what we asked for last year. We took a step back and looked at this event. Not to gloat, but we felt that we did a really good job with this event. One of the reasons that we did do the job that we did is that we had the resources available to handle it. So, once we realized, okay, we're employing this much to do this much, let's not overdo it. Let's not put ourselves into a predicament where we can't control it. That's why we reduced the number. We want to have a quality event with as little possible, problems as possible. So we actually scaled the number back to eighteen thousand from twenty-two requested last year.
Okay. But you only had ten last year.
We were only at ten, that is correct.
Okay. That's all I have?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Walker, I'm not sweet on the new deal.
Okay.
I'm not keen on you, half of the amount of money that we received last time, and a number of wristbands that county employees then have to go sell to make up the other half of the revenue. I believe we make sixty thousand dollars a weekend on Davis Camp anyway. So, so to me, it looks like a lot of additional work, and also have a philosophical problem with government being in partnership with private business. Because effectively, that's what, that makes us co-promoters of the event. And I, I'm not comfortable with a role of, of co-promotion. I would just as soon see a cash payment for the facilities that we have, that you, that your company wants to use. Any chance we can back up and change that agreement?
Thank you. I'm certainly open to discussing more. However, this is the deal that we discussed with Mr. Lutowski, ahead of time that we felt was solid. The reason that we did this is, is the hard cost. I mean, our, our payment to the county last year was a hard cost, that what we're trying to do with less participants is reduce the cost, and to make it a, basically, a viable project. There's no doubt about it, and it's been on public record, we lost money in the two thousand seventeen, or two thousand eighteen event. So, in trying to budget and forecast for this event, we were trying to reduce some costs. The in-kind wristband offer made has a value. Those, it's basically seventy dollars per wristband value there. The reason we went this route is, is we undertook the rental of Davis Camp. We basically rented the entire park, and we were re-leasing or re-rerenting to people to stay in the park. The way we felt we need to go, on the go-forward, is only the southern part of the event, or I'm sorry, of the park, for use of the event, which would open up usage of the northern part by the county. However, in order to control this event and make sure that people participating are actual registrants of the event, including waivers and, and all the legal pieces, is that we needed to make sure everyone that had access to the park would be a Regatta attendee or participant. That's where the idea came in. Give the county in-kind five hundred wristbands. When they rent the park, they can give the wristbands to the renter that's doing it. Everyone that's in the park is a Regatta participant. I feel that the deal is pretty solid. I understand the sixty thousand for the weekend, we're talking about one day. Thirty-five thousand cash, and then the in-kind with the wristbands, I thought was a good deal. But certainly, welcome to rediscuss.
Thank you.
Can I, on that topic, Mr. Lutowski, is this a type of deal that we've done before? When we have events, maybe in the Walopie, BMX, anything like that? Is this a new thing?
Madam Chair, members of the board, as it relates to past Regatta offerings, what had happened last year was Marnell Gaming assumed the complete responsibility for not only the participant areas, but also the lodging areas. And Marnell Gaming took it upon themselves to sell lodging packages at their leisure for the Regatta weekend. And as a result, remitted a seventy-five thousand dollar fee to Mojave County Parks Flat Fee for permit of said park. This year, we were approached, staff had represented, being comfortable with the seventy-five thousand dollar fee once again. It does exceed what we would normally take in an entire weekend. We have to look beyond just a Saturday event, because we are permitting those days before and after the event for cleanup, and it certainly would impact the amount of folks that would come out to Davis Camp. We all know they like to come out on either Friday evening, or especially by Saturday. They're not necessarily going to come out on Sunday. We'll probably see some day use activity, but we're not going to see that weekend use that generates substantial revenue for us during the summer. So, back on point, with regard to Mr. Walker's statement that the Regatta had, may, may have lost money last year, Marnell Gaming approached the county with the position that they simply did not wish to take on the level of fixed fee that they remitted last year. But as staff, we needed to be able to craft a revenue plan that would at least meet or exceed last year's revenue. And we did put one together with negotiating with Marnell Gaming that would potentially, and again, I underscore potentially, realize about eighty-one thousand dollars in revenue as a result of Marnell Gaming paying a thirty-five thousand dollar fixed fee for use of South Beach and the pavilion, which does meet the existing rental rates that are currently prescribed. And then offering the five hundred wristbands, which are valued at seventy dollars each. And what Parks would be doing is, we would be selling two-night weekend packages for Friday and Saturday night stays at the vacation homes. And we're anticipating only about half the RV slips being rented. We're not going to go outrageously assume that we're going to sell out the entire park, and then the entire Ramadas to be rented. So, we're basically aligning the summer lodging rates, packaging the wristbands, and coming up with a lodging package for the Regatta, which we do reasonably believe will be a good sell. So, the difference between last year and this year is Marnell Gaming will still have all of the requirements for transportation, for security, and for all of the stakeholder coordination. The only thing that they would give up is, they would be giving up the lodging reservations that would now be taken by the county through Mojave County Parks. And Parks would be seeing all of revenue related to that lodging, and we're going to basically put forward lodging packages.
Okay, Mr. Lutowski, a couple of constituents, well, not a couple, several constituents came to me and said that last year, people were told to leave with no notice, and because it was an event weekend, they had nowhere to go. So I, I want you to say on record that that is something that could not happen and will not happen. I'm just saying, this was what I heard. I'm not, I didn't see it for myself. So, that couldn't happen. I mean, no one's going to be kicked out of the park.
Chairman Angus, the only thing I can think of is, we may have some long-term renters of RV spaces, such as the monthly renters, and we will obviously make accommodations for them and certainly honor their reservations. Now, we have not taken reservations for, like, the vacation homes, and that's specific to that weekend, because we will be rolling out lodging packages. But to your point, if we have monthly RV renters, and just because we have this single special event, it's just their sole benefit, and we're going to make sure it's their benefit that they get to lodge during the Regatta weekend.
Okay, very good. I have a question about security, but is there any other questions about, on this line?
I have a question, Madam Chair. I guess the problem I have, Steve, is that you're saying we got seventy-five thousand last year?
Correct. Marnell Gaming remitted seventy-five thousand dollars.
And this year, at the max, we're going to get is seventy thousand.
Supervisor Johnson, we will be receiving thirty-five thousand, and then if we are successful in selling our lodging packages, we could realize over forty-one thousand additional. So, we're looking at about eighty-one thousand.
Oh, we got...
I'm sorry, forty-six thousand additional. So that brings us to the eighty-one thousand.
I thought it was five hundred tickets at seventy bucks.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson, however, we had the lodging fees that will, the nightly lodging rates that we'll be recovering as well. So, in essence, I should have this, we would be selling...
Right, but I mean, from the, from the agreement we had last year, we had seventy-five thousand. This year, we're getting thirty-five. And if we go out and hawk every ticket, you know, and I don't know if you're giving a reduction in, in your rates with the, with the package deal, but we're getting seventy thousand. And they've raised their threshold from to eighteen thousand for sales, which is, what, a million-two, almost a million-three.
Staff estimates, Supervisor Johnson, that we could realize up to eighty-one thousand. There would be about forty-six thousand dollars of revenue that we could possibly gain, not only with the sale of the wristbands, but the sale of the lodging facilities. For example, the, the two-night stay at a vacation home would be six hundred and fifty dollars per house for a two-night stay with four wristbands included. Seven hundred for the three-bedroom house. Our Ramadas would be four hundred dollars per, per Ramada for a Friday check-in, checkout Sunday. And then the RV space is at three hundred and fifty dollars per site. Again, every one of them packaged, including four wristbands. That's how we're going to try to spin it, not try to sell individual wristbands.
Right, but now you're getting into what the problem is, at least the way I saw it, Supervisor Gould had, is being in a partnership. I mean, the, the way I would look at it is, they're renting half the park, or whatever. We can still have day use, right? I can drive up there and go down on the beach if I want for...
On, on the Regatta Saturday, there will not be a day use. That will return on Sunday.
So the whole, whole park was, I thought they were only using the south part, South Beach. But that's the whole, whole beach, so we, so we are limited to, as, as Mr. Flynn said, people not being able to use the park. The only way they're going to be able to use it is through the...
Correct, on, on Saturday.
Yeah, I, I see now where it, it just seems like, you know, we should just get our seventy thousand if we're doing the whole thing, and...
And that was the case in past years as well. They used to be encumbered on Saturday.
All right. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval item thirty-eight. The park use agreement between Mojave County and the Edgewater Gaming and the Marnell Group.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So that's item thirty-eight. Now, item thirty-nine is brought by Ken Cunningham, our Human Resource Director. Discussion of possible action, direct that the county no longer support and promote AFLAC effective the end of eighteen-nineteen fiscal year, and to not take on any other
Madam Chairman, Mr. Cunningham couldn't be here today, so I'll take any questions that the board might have. But if you recall, I believe we had another provider approach Supervisor Johnson in the past, and he isn't the only one. We periodically have different providers asking if they can have the same deal that AFLAC does. Now, AFLAC provides their services with support of the county. The county allows AFLAC to come on our campus and solicit members and... The county allows Aflac to come on our campus and solicit members and participate in our open enrollment and new hires. And actually, we provide our employees with their information. And we couldn't find any evidence that they had ever been solicited by the county and officially approved by the board. The support that the county employees and departments provide is, is not a great deal. It's about 20 hours per month services. We do the billing, we check the billing, we verify, and then make sure that Aflac's paid appropriately. And we utilize our payroll deduction. In speaking with my procurement director, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that are not exactly correct with this type of a situation. You know, one is that if we are allowing one particular provider and there's other services out there that can do the same thing, we should solicit that service. And we all know that that service is actually, the service that the county provides is actually solicited through Aaron Collinson, associate, and through our SIRE EBT program. So, this is actually outside the current services that are being provided Mojave County. I think we have less than 50 members of our workforce that participates in this and does a payroll deduction. If we opened it up to everyone, every provider, it would, it could become unmanageable for our departments to actually support that type of service. So, that's not practical. And like I mentioned before, the service that they provide is in the service that Mojave County Board of Supervisors has elected to provide our employees. It's done totally outside board authority. So, in my email trying to address this situation, I promised the board that I would bring that back in front of the board for a business decision on whether you want to move forward with these types of activities with this type of support shortly after the first of the year. So, I'm, I'm keeping my promise to the board on that. Administration's recommendation would be exactly what the recommended motion is, is to not provide this service and in the future, not allow unsolicited services such as Aflac to be a part of our support program within the county. Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
Any questions?
I have questions, Madam Chair. I guess my questions, from what you're saying, this should be an EBT decision. But you're saying EBT had nothing to do with it. We have no record. I mean, obviously, we're not sitting as, as EBT, we're not the EBT, but shouldn't that be something that comes from EBT where they say, hey, we're making a recommendation that we're getting rid of this? And if we do have 50 people to say, oh, well, we looked at it and it is something we should be offering our employees and we've come up with a program to do instead of the Board of Supervisors, because that's not our job anymore.
Madam Chairman, this is something that EBT has nothing to do with. And it's something that each individual employee can actually go out on the open market and procure the services themselves. And we couldn't, administration couldn't find where we started this. But we believe it's been occurring since the 90s, you know, that, that the county's been doing this. And, and we believe possibly a past county adminis, county HR director might have instituted Aflac and allowed this to occur or at least set it up. But the information isn't there from our research. We have no idea. We just know that it's been happening a long time. So, the service can be procured by employees. It's a service that the county has elected not to support, to provide through SIRE EBT. We believe our package that we provide through SIRE EBT is a very good, all-inclusive package to our employees. So, this is something additional. And, you know, we're placing in front of the board for business-
Supervisor Bishop, you want to say something?
I, I think Mr. Hendricks already clarified it for me. These 50 employees won't lose their Aflac policies. They'll just have to change the way that that policy's paid for. They'll have to write a check themselves rather than it being a payroll deduction.
That's correct. And Madam Chairman, we're also asking the board to consider six months to cease services, support services that the county provides to allow those employees utilizing Aflac sufficient amount of time to go ahead and procure that service from either Aflac or whoever they may choose or not at all at, at that time.
Okay, any other?
No, Madam Chair, the only thing I have is it's not the Aflac part. I mean, we offered this to our employees. If it's not a good deal, it's not a good deal. But the bigger problem for me is why this was done through, how this was done through the county without obviously board approval or anything else.
Yeah, nobody seems to know. Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the board historian Supervisor Johnson why he can't remember when this was instituted. I believe you were here eight years before I was.
It was, it never came before, but there, there is another one that is, was the attorney thing where you could buy insurance from-
Prepaid legal, probably?
Right, I believe the county was selling that at one time, too. And I don't know that that ever, you know, those things should have gone through. So, there could be more than just this one.
Well, certainly-
But Aflac, I don't plan on ever getting old, so.
Ha, 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 good, good job.
Okay, let's do it.
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion that we approve item 39 as written and-
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 40. I, first I want to say, does anybody need a break or should we power on? You need a break? Okay, so let's take a 10-minute break. We'll come back to item 40.
And we're on item forty. Item forty was brought to us by our county manager, discussion of possible action, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the joint farm lease extension agreement, an addendum to the extension agreement, and joint lease buy-in between Wacca-Moto Farms at Mojave County. I do have somebody signed up to speak. We'll listen to that first. Again, Frank Flynn. Come on down. You'll have to give us your name and address again, please.
Thank you. It's, we're dealing with seventy, seventy dollars an acre.
Mr. Flynn, Flynn, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name, Frank Flynn, seventy-four sixty, Arkahola Drive, Mojave Valley, eight-six-four-four-zero.
Thank you.
And that comes out to eight-hundred-and-forty dollars per year. And to recoup that, I believe the price of the property was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. That'll take approximately twenty-nine-point-seventy-six years to recoup that money, which is not really going to happen because it'll increase along the line anyway. But normally, and I know from when my wife had restaurants, if she had five restaurants at one time, would lease someplace, they would charge a percentage of the gross. So I thought perhaps maybe that's what we ought to do. And then that was one of the most important thing here, it seems like, from what I get out of it, is that it's the water. Is the water going off the property? Is the water staying on the property? If the water goes off the property, is Mojave County going to take the money for this? If that's true, then probably need a filter system or everything. And that's where our new economic development person, Ms. Orgenback, she would come into place. I read her resumes, and she's, she's an expert. Perhaps we could get her involved in this. That's really I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The only thing I would have, I have an item that's later on that goes over this, so, I mean, go on your order you want to go, but I don't know that I have a complete understanding now that the consortium and everything else has been involved in it. I guess that's the problem I have, and I'll be voting no just for the fact that I don't have the information I think I need.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval and authorize the chairman to accede to joint farm lease extension agreement.
Okay, we have a motion? You need a second? Well, I'll second that. That's what you want?
Madam Chairman.
Sure, discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
So assuming that the appraiser came and appraised the value of the property and established the rent at seventy dollars an acre.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Ghul. At, I brought this forward previously to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board authorized me to get a competent appraisal to appraise the valuation of the lease. We received that, and it's included, it was included within the backup in the lease appraisal came in at seventy dollars per acre per year. The statute that we fall under is eleven-two-fifty-six, and that required that the Board accept ninety percent of that appraised value. What we're, what's placed in front of the Board today is a hundred percent of that appraised value.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Members, we need to remember that we might know what we're talking about, but the folks in the audience might not know what we're talking about, or the folks on the world wide web might not know what we're talking about. So sometimes we might want to do a little discussion on what's actually going on, rather than just moving through our agenda item, just so that the, because we work for the folks, and the folks might want to know what the heck we're doing. And so a lot of times I ask redundant questions, and that's why I ask those redundant questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one question, Madam Chair. This lease, does this include the additional water that we bought?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, and if I get my numbers wrong, I apologize, but I think I'm going to be pretty accurate. When we purchased this property, we, the previous owner had two acres, per acre of water that was allocated by Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District. We subsequently applied for sufficient water for this property to allow us to farm alfalfa. The farm was already being farmed through joint lease agreement by the farmer utilizing some of the water from an adjacent property that's included in that joint lease agreement to make up the difference that was needed to actually farm alfalfa. I believe it's important for this property to be farmed for a couple of reasons. One is that it allows Mojave County to be an electorate, an elector, I'm sorry, not electorate, but an elector. It allows us to vote in the district. Only farmers have that ability. Regular property owners, regardless of whether they have allocations or not, are not allowed to vote. When purchasing this property, it was important that at least we had allocations that were given by MBIDD, because that was what provided us with standing. I believe being an elector provides us with additional standing and gives us additional leverage for certain actions. So I probably didn't answer the question, but.
Did the extra, the extra water we bought, is that being charged for?
And I wanted to, wanted to get there. We didn't buy any extra water. We've applied for the extra water, but currently, and this is an important issue for standing, MBIDD doesn't have any extra water to give, yet we have applied and need extra water. If they take any action to follow or to do intentionally credit surplus where that water goes to central Arizona or does not go to MBIDD, we've shown a need. We've applied for it. If they don't provide it to us, then it provides us with additional standing on any action that the Board might want to take against MBIDD. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Chair, County Manager, I guess that's where I wanted to go in the other item, was if we don't have the extra water, and the person who's leasing our land is using somebody else's water, and reviewing the minutes of the Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District, I saw there was some consternation with what was going on, and in a certain amount of years, they might take away water or want to take away water or something. Is there any legalities that we're getting involved in if our lessor or lesee is using water that's not appropriated to our, our farm, our land?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, that's a very good question. It was a concern to me. In reviewing the lease agreement, it's, well, it's totally the responsibility of the farmer to provide whatever water is necessary to farm. It's Mojave County, Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District's responsibility to allocate the water that they have to allocate. Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District has agreed to allow the current allocations, which includes our joint farm lease agreement, to continue for another year, so that they can look for solutions to provide us with the extra water if necessary to continue farming. That's, that's what they've said in their minutes. So as far as my conversations with MBIDD Board, they've been confident with me that Mojave County is going to be able to get additional allocations necessary, regardless of whether they allow this joint farm lease agreement to go forward after the one years. Does, does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask our county manager, I believe that Supervisor Johnson was indicating that we're purchasing additional water, and I believe the answer to that is we're trying to perfect the rights, the prior perfected rights. Is that correct?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Watson, another, and the water issues down in Mojave Valley are somewhat complicated. They're not straightforward. And Colorado River water is somewhat complicated. There's different priority water rights along the Colorado River. And we believe what Supervisor Watson's referring to is that our piece of land actually has prior perfected rights, which is the highest priority right of water along Colorado River. That's the PP&Rs. And that was granted, I believe, in because of water use back in about nineteen-twenty.
Correct.
So we believe that there could potentially be up to, just short of five acre feet per acre of PPRs, that we, at least if I can get Board approval, that at some future date we'll be pursuing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our Supervisor Watson.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Supervisor Johnson?
No, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to remind the public that this, as a business decision, this makes absolutely no sense, but that wasn't why the land was purchased. The land was purchased to have standing in any potential lawsuit and to give us a vote with the MBIDD. So the, the lease on the farm is ridiculous. You'd never, you'd never pay the thing back, ever. But bear in mind, that wasn't why they, why they chose to buy the thing. And I just wanted to take a minute and explain that to the people.
Thank you, Supervisor Gold. Okay, I'm ready for motion. We, did we have one? We have one. And a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
And Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, item forty-one, discussion possible action for the purpose of expediency, continuity, and to preserve the knowledge gained and important relationships made in dealing with groundwater and Colorado River water issues facing Mojave County, continue to authorize Supervisor Gary Watson to represent Mojave County in its important groundwater and Colorado River water issues. The full Board will be apprised of any relevant actions by the county manager. I brought this as a way to, we need to formalize that. And any discussion?
Chairman Angus, I make a motion that we approve.
You need a second? I'll second that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have a problem with one board member being, having the ability to direct lobbyists in policy without that being brought back to the full Board for a vote. And that's my problem, and that's what you're doing here. If you're going to, only going to apprise me of the decisions that were made after the fact, my voters did not elect me to be a junior supervisor. They elected me to be a full-fledged supervisor, and I believe that these decisions should be brought back to the Board and that the Board should make that decision. And the big problem with this is you see this, when you delegate things to other people, you lose the authority that the people have given you. And you see this in government up and down, that when that delegate, that authority is delegated, you end up having problems. And I would rather see that, that comeback. None of this is going to be an emergency that takes a snap action decision. We meet every two weeks.
Thank you.
That's my view.
Chairman Angus? Oh, yes, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to make notes that sometimes these are last-minute decisions that need to be made immediately and then ratified by the Board. Board can always choose not to ratify a decision, but sometimes Supervisor Watson is in Phoenix or on, on phone calls with, with our attorneys and our lobbyists, and, and he needs, I believe he needs that authority to, to make those decisions based on ratification of the Board.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I don't, I was kind of confused by this. I don't see, you know, like we're putting Supervisor Watson on a board or something, which we've done in the past. This is like saying, well, at least the way I read it is that Supervisor Watson, anything comes up with water, he has the authority to do it. I mean, if we have a, you know, like a water board meeting or something like that, and we say, yeah, we want Supervisor Watson to represent us, I have no problem, but a carte blanche thing with no idea what we're doing, it bothers me.
Why?
Not, not the decision he would make, just the idea that, I don't know what the heck Supervisor Watson's doing.
Have we ever had an issue?
From time to time, I don't either, Supervisor Johnson.
Supervisor Watson, have we ever had that, where you, in your role as the water representative at the time, also Supervisor Wacca-Moto, that there was a decision that you made that came back, like Supervisor Bishop said, to be ratified, or a decision that maybe should have been made by the Board? I, I just don't remember.
Madam Chairman, in 2017, I believe it was, that the Board approved the chairman of the Board, which was Supervisor Watson, to represent the county on water issues. And it was about the same language as in this Board action. And the reason that that occurred is because we're in the legislative process, and decisions are made very, very quickly. And like Supervisor, our previous Supervisor Wacca-Moto said to the Board, that when asked, can you tell us what's happening with DCP? Well, no, she couldn't, because things are changing so rapidly, and the county needs to take a position. And the Board has made it clear, at least the majority of the Board has made it clear, that we want to protect Lake Mead. We want to keep water from being transferred to central Arizona. We want to try to support the governor on whatever actions that, that the governor is taking. We want to take, support legislation which will protect our aquifers here. So, and there's several other items that the Board has actually agreed upon as principles and, and policies. And I believe the other thing that's important with Supervisor Watson, over the course of these last two years since 2017, relationships have been made. You know, there's been numerous trips down to Phoenix where he's testified in front of the CAP. He's met with Senator Griffith. He's met with Representative Bowers. He's met with different lobbyists and legislators. He's worked with Representative Cobb on the groundwater legislation and on trying to support us, and gone down to the MBIDD meetings. And it takes a considerable amount of effort, sometimes two trips down to Phoenix a week. It's not just a board and no, not to disagree with Supervisor Gould, but it almost takes a constant presence and constant support in this action to try to do what the Board has believed to be, is in the best interest of Mojave County, to try to protect our groundwater and Colorado River water. Basically, those are the principles, you know, and to not have water transferred to central Arizona and to not deplete our aquifers up here in, in Mojave County.
Okay. Would you like to?
Chairman? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I believe we can call an emergency meeting in forty-eight hours. If a decision has to be, we need a snap action.
That's with the five board members. It takes a majority. It takes a unanimous.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, actually, you can call an emergency meeting with a twenty-four hour notice. However, if one board member cannot or refuses to participate, there has to be a five-day notice per statute.
Thank you. The, the point being, and what Mr. Hendricks stated, that's all well and good, and I'm not denying the Board the opportunity to, to continue the relationships that Supervisor Watson has built. What I don't want to happen is, is he wasn't elected by my voters. They elected me to make that decision. That's my decision to make. I don't want to delegate my decision. I want that to come back to the Board, and if there's decisions to be made, then the Board should make the decisions, not one individual. That's my point.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I'd like to answer your question, Chairman Angus. Most of those decisions, based on tactics, on how we're going to confront today's agenda, whereas the positions the Board takes, we've already always brought back those items for complete Board action. So it's tactics, daily tactics versus the Board's positions. So.
We decide the strategy.
We've never taken a position without a Board action.
Right. So we do the strategy and the philosophy, and you just carry that out. Okay? Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What Supervisor Watson says is what I've always thought. We all sit on different boards, and we all know the feeling of the Board, whether votes and whether you're on the winning side or the losing side, you carry forth whatever the majority of the Board wants to do. And I guess that's what threw me off with this item, is because, you know, we voted on the same things that County Manager Hendricks has said, and that's what, you know, I've always, always known that Supervisor Watson would be doing, but I guess I don't see the need for the agenda item, because it's, it just seemed to, to me to be confusing.
Well, on that note, we have a, we do have a motion and a second, so let's have a roll call.
Order.
Yes.
Point of order.
Yes.
Summarize, this is fact sheet, the backup material one. If you look at August 7th of 2017 meeting, the board authorized chairman of the board, Gary Watson, to provide direction to High Ground Inc. and Cheryl Sweeney on our critical groundwater and surface issues when time constraints and deadlines make it impossible to obtain board consensus. Which, to me, seems like there's supposed to be a consensus.
Well, it said when it's unable. And the consensus comes when we discuss it and we talk about our philosophy, either here or in executive session with our lawyers and lobbyists.
I'm in.
Okay. Anyone else? Let's take a vote.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Number 42, brought forward by Buster Johnson, Mojave County Supervisor, District 3. Discussion on possible action. Direct staff to bring back to the board a complete history on the farm consortium lease with Wakamono Farms and all other parties involved, and also direct the attorney's office to bring back a legal opinion to the board regarding entering into a farm consortium lease and the water transfer issue raised by the MVIDD board of their, at their December meeting. Supervisor Johnson?
That's all there was.
That's all she said. So, we direct the staff. Do we need a motion for this, or what? Just to...
If, if, if that's what the majority of the board wants to do. It just, it seems to me that it's gotten pretty confusing here lately with, you know, that we're part of a group, and then with water, you know, just like we talked about in the earlier item, somebody using water on our land that we're leasing to somebody. Because basically, we're leasing a piece of land that we can't, for a use, that we can't handle. And if they're using other water, and then with, you know, reading that, those minutes where they were talking about, you know, this group that was formed and until was the last meeting or the meeting before, when we found out that we were part of a consortium, and now MVIDD's saying that, you know, maybe there is no such thing as a consortium. I just thought, and then I'll put it off on Supervisor Gould, that he has less information than the rest of us have had. So, it'd be kind of nice to just, you know, whether it's an executive session where somebody goes through and explains exactly what our standing is, or what, I'm just kind of at a loss for what we're doing.
Well, I can go for that. So, you just want a legal, sort of a legal opinion explanation as to what this all means?
Yeah, exactly. Where we're at, what our standing is there. I mean, I understand we own land. The consortium kind of threw me off. Yeah, that's basically all, just an explanation.
Yeah, we've had little bits and pieces, but not a whole overriding explanation, so I'm good with that.
If I can, if I may say something, Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. So, in terms of what the county attorney's office provides to the board, we provide advice and counsel to the board. And really, a lot of times, my focus is on Title 11. The Title 11 is where the board's authority comes from. We've talked about Title, Title 11, 11256, for example, a little bit earlier. 11251 is the powers of the board, and that's usually where my focus is. In terms of the, the standing, the things about water and that kind of stuff, I'm not a water attorney. No one in our office, in the county attorney's office, is a water attorney. This is information that's provided from, from the contracted attorney that Mojave County has contracted with. So, I would recommend, if you, if this is the avenue you wish to pursue, that you get that opinion from your water attorneys and not from the county attorney's office.
I guess, Madam Chair, my question would be that, I don't really want to hear from the water attorney, but our county attorney makes a recommendation to us that we just either be involved in this or where our standing is, you know, that, yes, you can be involved in a consortium, the legal ramifications there, because this other guy we're just paying money to, he's going to tell us whatever he wants to...
So, you're just saying, you just want an explanation as to what a consortium is and our partner? I mean, it's just sort of like a technical...
Our partner, and if it's legal for us to be involved in it per state statutes, and it, because it seemed to, over the years, over the time that we've been involved, our role has changed in what we're doing, you know, so that's all I'm looking for.
Well, do you want to put that in form of motion?
Well, before you do that, I'm just, I'm just going to caution you and say that, that from, I will not be able to, I, no one from our office, from the county attorney's office will be able to opine as to the water issues, the standing on the water issues. Those are not things for that. Just so you're aware, we won't be able to opine on that. But if you want to know, just from a pure Title 11, you know, can the county enter into this contract? I can give you that, I can give you my opinion right now if you want, or I can put it in writing, whatever you prefer.
I would make a motion to have the county attorney come back with a written opinion regarding the legality of the purchase of the land in Mojave Valley from, through MVIDD, the purchase of the, or the proposed purchase of extra water, and also any role that we have, legality of us being involved in a consortium in the Mojave Valley irrigation and drainage system. I think that would answer the, is there any other questions I missed?
I just want to make sure that Ginny got this. You got it?
Anything else anybody else was curious about?
I think it makes sense.
You want to throw in the kitchen sink?
Good.
If I could just add too, we also may, when we, when they bring this back, I think we may also want to put it in executive session as well. I mean, one of the challenges that I've had just in this job is, many times, I just want to give you a legal advice and just say, hey, you're my client, here's the advice that I'm giving you. And sometimes, we do that in public, but other times, it is prudent to be able to go in executive session, just like a classic attorney-client position, where I can say, hey, this is our legal position here, and this is what we advise you to do. So, I just, you may want to consider that this be brought back in executive session as well.
Do you want to add that to your motion?
Well, that can always be starred, and it's up to the board to vote to go in or out, so...
And I agree with that. I just, just so you're aware, that we may want to star that in the future as well. So, to your...
Madam Chair, I'll second the motion, but I've got a comment that I'd like to run by Mr. Esplin. How does this consortium differ from a purchasing agreement of which the procurement department works under all the time?
I don't see it as too different, Supervisor Watson, I don't. I, I don't like the word consortium, that is, it's been thrown around there a lot, but I just don't see this as any kind of a...
I don't like it either, but I'm pretty sure the consortium and purchase agreements might be pretty equal.
I think there's a lot of similarities, I'd say. And so, I, I'm happy to write a legal opinion, but it's going to be strictly to whether the county has the authority to enter into an agreement and so forth. But in terms of the, again, I'm not, I cannot opine about the standing, the water issues, and the legality of those things, because I'm just not a water attorney.
And I don't believe the water issues are central to that issue. I think the issue is the calling it a consortium. That was done by the original property owner.
Certainly.
And I think that the definition of consortium, as well as that of a purchasing agreement with the state or the counties, or for that matter, even cities, we do that all the time on a weekly basis. So, I'll end at that. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion? Did we have a second? We do. Okay. Roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 42, discussion on possible action. Direct staff to bring back to the board, oh, no, no, that's the one we just did, right?
43.
We're on 43.
Madam Chair, if I may, on item 43, information was provided before the meeting, so I'd request to speed continue to the next.
Okay. We're going to continue item 43. Do we need a motion on that?
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? 44, discussion possible action. Holding all meetings of the Self-Insurance Retention Employee Benefits Trust Board, SIREBT, in the Board of Supervisors Auditorium for the purpose of live-streaming the meetings. Supervisor Johnson?
Madam Chair, as I put in the backup, I get a lot of people to ask me all the time about what's going on now if the board doesn't sit on it. We have this room and everything. I thought employees could watch the meeting, and, you know, just a good place for us to hold our meetings.
Can I say something? I'm the chairman of this, this board, and I have been for six years, and I think it's a great idea that we record it. I don't, logistically, and the way our meetings go, I don't know if this venue is going to lend itself to it. And I spoke to Aaron Collins over the weekend, and he said that a lot of his groups are going this way, and what they're doing, and I think this would work for us, is just videotaping it. We can put it up on the HR website, so they'll have the agenda, and then, you know, it's open to the public anyway. And so, if there's something on the agenda that is something that an employee really feels strongly about, they can always come, speak to their director, and see if, you know, they can work it out to come. But, so, your point is, you just really want it recorded so people could see it, not that it's live-streamed, because, you know, these meetings can go three, four hours too, so you don't want people sitting, watching it live while they're working. Would it be okay just to have it videotaped and put it up on the, because it's also, there are some things contractually, I believe, and I could be wrong, that we're not allowed to say, there's some HIPAA things, so we got to be careful. I'm not saying that there'd be editing going on, but I just feel with live-streaming, it would, it would, it would be a little more difficult to, to do the whole thing at once. But if that's the way this board wants to go, I'm fine with it.
I just thought that we have the facility here, and then if you're going to go and say, well, now, especially because it'd obviously be up to the county, so then we'd have to have cameras go someplace else to do it. I mean, we have, hopefully, one of these items here has, the attorneys are supposed to show up everywhere, so they should be saying, don't talk about that or do something. And I understand it goes for an awful lot of hours and stuff, but...
I just don't think this venue will lend itself, because, you know, we have vendors and we have our group, there's a lot of people. I mean, maybe it can. I mean, we can look into it. We, they do record them. I mean, I've, I think I've seen almost at every meeting, a recorder, I think some of the vendors, or maybe Aaron Collins records it. So, I just think it would be easier to record it and then put it up, and put it up on the HR and let people download it at their, and maybe on that HR website, there would be much more explanation, and they can cross, you know, look at things at the same time. But again, it's up to the board.
Yeah, I would, even though I'm trying to disagree, but I just thought with this venue, and before, when the board was in charge of the Health Department, we held them in the boardroom, and then vendors came up if we had bids or whatever and explained it. It just, and live-streaming, I guess, just for openness, just seems better than taping it, but it just seems to be, and if our employees are sitting there, I mean, it's their benefits, as long as they're doing their job, you know, and I don't want them sitting on for three hours doing that.
No, I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about, you know, if you're live-streaming it, then, you know, people, you're saying that the employees should be able to watch it?
Yeah.
When it's being live, so like, for three hours while they're doing their work?
Well, I mean, they could have it on if there's something of interest to them, if they see something, because right now, it's kind of hard to see them. You know, if they go, yeah, item 44 is something...
I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that this venue is going to work. Is Karen Otto here? Or anyone from, no HR person here?
Chairman Angus?
Yeah.
One thing that I did just think of and kind of checked with Nathan is, we will need to ensure that we have equipment, staff, and how that recording will work, which, sorry, Nathan, but that would probably be a question for IT to ensure...
You mean, to re-record offsite?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a camera that's on a tripod.
At this point, he is informing me that he does not have equipment for that. So, that, that's why I'm kind of passing the buck to him.
The camera on the tripod. I'm sure we have it somewhere. But again, up to the board. The only thing I worry about is sort of the logistics of it, but I'm sure we can make it work. If that would be easiest.
Chairman Angus, is there food and drinks when the vendors are here?
Yeah, there's, there's lunch provided when the meetings go long.
And that's not allowed in this...
Yeah, it's not allowed in here.
This auditorium.
So, we would have to go upstairs and do something, which, you know, wouldn't be the end of the world. I really wish someone from HR was here, but it's not, not going to happen.
My opinion is, as long as it's being recorded and available to employees, but as the clerk of the board mentioned, IT doesn't have that equipment, so we may need to have another agenda item to see if we want to purchase that for IT.
Madam Chairman, if I recall correctly, SIREBT at one of our meetings, we did discuss having the meetings at county facility and not, not having it elsewhere. And one of the drawbacks was the food. We certainly go upstairs, and if the board so chose to have this, the venue, you know, planning and zoning meetings are here, I'm sure we can, even though the tables might be, not be perfectly square, I'm sure we can fit tables and chairs here, and if that's what the board so chooses, we can, we can have meetings here.
I knew he'd come down those stairs. Nathan, do you have something to say about the equipment situation?
Sure. Morning, Board and Chairman Angus. From IT's perspective, we currently don't have equipment to go on a traveling meeting if, if, you know, unless you're going to have meetings here, which this room's outfitted and designed to stream and record and record the audio, you know, optimally, this room's really the best place. If you want to have recordings taking place at other locations, you know, I would have to basically buy some equipment and kind of plan to do that. Currently, you know, we're set up to do this room.
So, this would be the easiest?
This would be the easiest, idealistically, yeah. I mean, they do make equipment, obviously. We can do recordings in other places, but, you know, that's not something we currently do today. I mean, we do have an old camcorder, that's probably 15 years old, that we could break out and see if there's tapes that still function for it, but we don't have anything that's modern that will work with what we do now.
All right, thank you.
As far as live-streaming to YouTube and stuff like that.
Got it.
I have a question for you.
Oh, yeah, GoPro on my head. I'll put a GoPro on my head.
Nathan, if the meetings are held here, they don't necessarily need to be live-streamed, they could just be recorded and then uploaded to the HR website?
That's true.
Okay.
I mean, our policy, our procedure for, for meetings, and this is something that I've developed, is that if it's a public meeting, that someone from the general public is allowed to walk in and attend, we live-stream it.
Okay. And just for clarification, we're only talking about the EBT, not the SIR, because that's, that's done in executive session.
It's all in one meeting, right? It's EBT, SAR, and then you just go into executive session?
Yeah, and we're just going to executive session.
Yeah, anything that's not legal.
Okay. All right, then, then I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, do you have a motion for this item?
Do we have a motion? I forget. No, no motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we do indeed hold all the meetings for the Self-Insurance Retention Employee Benefits Trust here in the Board of Supervisors Auditorium, providing more transparency and sunlight is always a good...
Always good.
A good item.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carrying. Last item of the day. Discussion on possible action. Discussion, oh, wow. Discussion on possible action, directing staff to add an additional employee to the clerk of the board's office in the FY '20 budget for the purpose of posting agendas, taking minutes, and posting action agendas for all county boards and commissions, and also directing staff to work with the county attorney's office to ensure an attorney is sitting in on all boards, commissions, and advisory committees within the jurisdiction of Mojave County.
Summer.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Can we have some discussion there real quick?
I don't think the attorney has discussion.
Well, can I ask that we have discussion?
All right, well, I will, I will grant permission to have discussion.
Thank you. Just the last part of that. What are we talking about in terms of providing the county attorney's office to sit on all boards, commissions, and advisory committees? Let me just run you through. I made a quick list. We're already there at the planning and zoning commissions. We're already there with the SIREBT. I've been going, I went to the most recent public lands commissions. So beyond that, we're missing building code advisory board? I don't think someone from our office goes there. I don't, they meet on a quarterly basis, is that right? Is that how often they meet? Anybody know?
Library.
Library. So, library.
Building code advisory.
Isn't, that's what I meant. Building code advisory board, library and transportation board.
And then you, you attend all the, what's the one that oversees us? If we, if they don't like what we do on planning and zoning?
Board of adjustments.
Board of adjustments, you attend those, right?
I've never attended. Does somebody from our office, does Lenore come from our office go there?
Chairman Angus and Board, yes. Actually, I've been to one of those, and Bob Taylor does, or he did, at least, at the one that I went to. I know he does planning and zoning. I'm not sure if he attends building code or not, that I, I'm not aware of.
Jurassic Advisory Board.
So, you see, library, they have to go to when they trout, because the library thing goes all around Mojave County.
And I think on some of those, it's, they've gotten away from what their, what their original ideas were, you know, that, that they don't really respond to the board, that they're there for us, and they have to follow rules, and, you know, have open meetings and all, all of that. And I think this will, you know, maybe it'll give us a chance when the attorney come back and says, you know, you've got stuff that's really, you know, we don't need, or that's not the function that we need to have. Because we also have, you know, we collect on every district board taxes, and part of that taxes is for, for us to provide attorneys. So I need, you know, if they request them, if they don't request them. But I just thought on ours, because we're getting bigger, and we've probably been lax on over the years, not having, you know, official minutes of that, because there's certain timelines that have to be, and, and clerk might be able to jump in. I know, like, after our meeting, you only got so long to have a action agenda item out, and then get the minutes out, and, you know, it's kind of like with, you know, the minutes we got today, or the financial statements, you know, if they'd had attorneys and those people there, you know, not that we're going to provide them, but, you know, that stuff would have all been handled.
Do you think we should possibly table this until we get a list of all the committees that are not using the advice of the county attorneys?
I think we just go ahead with it, and if somebody finds one, or somebody needs one, they just add it on. Clerk has something.
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Johnson, one thing I would request in this is, is we've kind of put together a plan to take on, you know, doing the agendas, action agendas, minutes, things like that. However, we would like that to exclude planning and zoning, because they kind of serve a little bit of different function, and they do have their own staff and clerk for that particular commission. We, we are willing to take on all of the others, but if you would exclude planning and zoning from this plan.
I think, Madam Chair, instead of excluding planning and zoning, we just put it all under the clerk, and then if, you know, she has the authority, as long as it's covered, you know, so we have the clerk to yell at, so she can't blame her.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just another item to, to think about is that, you know, the county attorney is an elected official, and just like this board is an elected, elected body, and this board doesn't necessarily can direct exactly what the county attorney can and cannot do. He's an elected person. It's only what is listed in statute, what the county attorney can and cannot do. And I don't know if it's necessarily wise to be able to say, well, county attorney, now you got to do this, now you got to do this, now you got to do this, when he's his own elected person too. What I, what I would say, though, is I, I think we try to accommodate whatever we can do to assist you and advise you, the board. So, and, and looking at what the powers and duties of the county attorneys is, it says, act as the legal advisor to the Board of Supervisors, attending its meetings and oppose claims against the county that the county attorney deems unjust or illegal. I, I think we can't, the board can direct and ask that the county attorney attend these, but I would ask that it be, attend as staff has time and means to do so. Sometimes, we just simply cannot do certain things, because we only have three civil attorneys right now that are handling these things. Between all of our responsibilities and duties, we may not be able to get to the library meeting, or we may not be able to get to the transportation board. And so I would suggest that you amend that to say, as, as, and direct, or ask, ask the county attorney's office to provide attorneys at these meetings as, as they have resources to do so.
Madam Chair, any board that we appoint people to, I think they're making recommendations to the board, and just like Supervisor Gould was talking about, his representation. I think we have to have legal advice there, and minutes of those, those meetings. I think, you know, we're in the, you know, 21st century here, and I think it's, I'm not willing to change, well, it wasn't my motion, but, I'm willing to change my second. I mean, that's part, if the county attorney wants to come and say, well, I disagree with you, fine, let him come and say he disagrees, but I think that's his responsibility to give legal advice, which ultimately protects us. And protects those people we appoint, because that's, that's a tough job when we appoint people to a, to a board or commission, and, and they don't know the rules, and there's no attorney there to give them the rules, and, and they get in trouble and are embarrassed in the paper, you know, someplace, so...
Happens a lot.
Yeah. I think we could try it with the motion that we have now, and then if there's a problem, the county attorney can come back and...
Okay, we have a motion?
Well, I'm sorry, one more thing. There's just one more. What is, what this does not cover, though, I want to make sure that, and this is, again, as Supervisor Gould pointed out, we're also pointing this out to the public. This is being advertised, so some of the things I'm saying here is for the public as well. This does not include fire districts. This does not include the special districts, because occasionally, we'll have to appoint somebody like we did in, in December, because by, by law, the board had to appoint someone.